Good evening, I'd like to open the meeting of the Deerfield Planning Board February 5th, 2018. So that's the first correction. At 6:10 here at the town offices. Our agenda tonight is that we'll review some minutes from the previous meetings, review some mail, and then we want to jump right into a public comment period. And tonight's subject for public comment is marijuana. This is a continuation of last month's opportunity for the planning board to hear from Deerfield residents and others regarding potential town bylaws and regulations for the cultivation, processing, and sale of marijuana in Deerfield in advance of legalization of marijuana in Massachusetts. Then we want to draft some proposed bylaws for cultivation, processing, and sale of marijuana in Deerfield, and then schedule a public hearing. Then we'll take any new business. We want to talk about our annual report. Then we'll talk about any other business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting. We'll set a date for the next meeting and adjourn. Do planning board members have any other things for the agenda? And I should say that we have six out of seven of the planning board members are present, and we actually have name tags, so you can know who we are. All right, if you just give us a few minutes to look at the minutes from the last meeting, which actually had to do with this subject, so.
As a look.
It's good with me.
Is Arjun here or last name?
I have a little, there's a quote from me about all the money going to the police and the ambulance and equality of life. It was more than that because when we did the medical marijuana, it wasn't supposed to tax any of our services that existed. They wanted it in one location, and that's what I was more concerned with. Because now all of a sudden, anything that does get raised from that tax, or whatever you want to call it, is going to go to those two things. But they said that.
Can I just strike that sentence from the minutes?
Well, either add to it, or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it was a comment, it wasn't a, there was no vote or anything on it.
Yeah.
Do you want to put a period? What do you, what do you?
Whatever you want to do, but that wasn't, that wasn't like, not the whole statement, that's all.
Okay, okay, no, I know.
I know, I'm not yelling at you, I'm just clarifying things.
But do you want to, you can rewrite it?
You can do whatever you want, Paul. If you want to strike it, strike it. If you want to add to it, that's fine with me.
Okay, and it's not my decision, but.
Would you like to add to it, Roger? Would you like to add to it?
That, at one time, it wasn't going to tax any of our resources, our existing resources in the community, then all of a sudden, the money has to go to those two entities to make them function properly, because it's going to create issues in our community.
Okay, so we want to edit this sentence.
I'm sorry, John, what'd you say?
I mean, we're just doing the minutes, we just want to edit the sentence.
Okay.
Or.
So your concern is that there was, tell me again more than times, I could rewrite it.
No, no, just, you can't bring up a new subject, we just want to.
Why don't you just say concerned about the quality of life relative to services?
Yeah, is that what you mean?
Make it just shorter.
Yeah.
Okay, repeat that for me, Rachel.
Well, can you just say the quality of life relative to services?
To town services?
Town services. Kind of vague, general, but.
About the quality of life in.
At one point in time, it was stated that medical marijuana would not affect any of our existing services.
So you were concerned about the effect on our town services?
Yep, and obviously, if those two things go up, it is going to affect the quality of our life.
Okay, let me just say this, Roger Shidowsky's concerned that the effect that, is concerned about the effect on the quality of life and the town services. Why don't you write it down there for me, Roger, what you're saying?
I will.
Well, but it's, no, Paul, it's supposed to be minutes, he can't make up something new. It's whatever you, you took the minutes and.
Well, that's what I got from what he said, but I could be wrong, so I'm.
Well, now, we're just, so we're just adding the ending of it and say, Roger Shidowsky's concerned about the quality of life in Deerfield relative to town services.
Relative to town services, is that okay?
And then tonight, he can elaborate on it every once, but really, we're just trying to get.
Well, I elaborated on it once, John.
All right. Anything else in the minute?
Yeah, I'd like to, since I was mentioned, I, where it says would like not to have money as the incentive for the zoning bylaw, I believe what I said was, I would like not to fund an economy on addiction. That was actually the quote. So if you could change that, Paul?
John Brown's would like not to fund an economy on addiction. To fund our economy on addiction.
As an incentive for this, does that have anything to do with the zoning bylaw?
Uh, yeah, it does.
But why don't you just make it shorter though, why you know? This is more than that, it's not just an incentive for zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
How about if I move to accept the minutes as amended of January 8th, 2018?
Second?
I'll second it.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstain? All right, 6-0.
6-0-0?
Yep. All right, and then the mail, we can probably do that afterwards. We often do that afterwards. All right, so now we get to the public comment part. So every meeting, we have a public comment, and often, we don't have many people who want to talk about anything. But tonight, we have as the subject marijuana. So as we said, it's going to continue from last month, and we made some progress, I think, last month. And tonight, we have some people to help us, so our town council is here, as well as representative from the FERCOG, who has helped us with some zoning bylaw issues before. So I'd actually like Adam to come up and kind of kick us off here. But before, before he does, I just want to say that some observations about our last meeting is that this tends to, a lot of people have opinions about this. We're the planning board, we're looking at bylaws, and I would just ask that everybody, you know, people can express their opinions, but if it gets, we don't want to get things too personal, and I'd ask everybody to please respect each other, and anybody who's speaking. And because this is televised, and we do want more people to be able to, in town, participate in it, we would ask that people come up to the microphones to say their, to state their, to make their statements. And I know that last time, it was more of a conversation, I still hope we get a conversation, this is an informal meeting, it's not a public hearing, but we do want other people to hear what we have to say. So if you'd come up to the microphones when you get a chance. And I'll try to keep it moving, ask people to keep their comments brief when possible. So, Adam, you want to kick us off, and you've done this around the state for a while, so you might add some, what you've learned there, too.
I will. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you know me, I'm Adam Costa, I'm with the firm of me, Teller, Man and Costa, we're your town council, we're town council in 15 other communities across Massachusetts. So as the chairman said, we've experienced what you're experiencing now in many of our other communities as well. All 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts have been faced with these same questions about how do we zone for first, medical marijuana, and now for recreational marijuana. As you know, question four passed on the 2016, November 2016 ballot, and as a consequence, it set in motion a process whereby recreational marijuana will become lawful in Massachusetts. Technically, has become lawful already, but there's a process for the purpose of permitting, licensing these facilities, and it's a multi-step process, which began with the legislation, which was later amended through the legislature, and now, the process is underway to promulgate regulations. Draft regulations were just released a few weeks ago, and are in the process of being finalized. There's actually a series of public hearings this week and next week, which will result in those regulations being finalized no later than March 15th. And then, of course, the licensing process will begin with the first licenses to issue this summer. So my understanding of the process that is now underway in Deerfield, and I'll credit you for having really gotten involved early on, I had discussions with your building commissioner back probably 15 months ago, maybe just shy of that, 13, 14 months ago, just after the legislation was adopted on the state level, we talked about how to potentially zone for recreational marijuana, and specifically for cultivation and processing. At that time, the discussion was not about retail sales. And so you've probably seen a version of a document that's been floating around, it's a relatively simple document, just a couple of pages, it's something that I had drafted at the request of the building commissioner, entitled zoning amendment marijuana cultivation and processing facilities. And the objective here was to very simply allow for these cultivation and processing facilities in certain locations in Deerfield by way of a special permit process. The objective here was not to identify the various types of marijuana establishments, everything from processing to testing, to indoor and outdoor, to retail sales, to marijuana cafes, that was not the objective of this article. The sole purpose of this article was to allow for processing and cultivation on limited sites in certain locations within the town of Deerfield. I understand that there has been further conversations that have been had in town and before this board over the course of the past many months, and specifically of late, and there have been discussions, not just about the possibility of cultivation and processing, but also about some of these other models that have been adopted in other communities. I know one that I've heard references to within the past couple of weeks has been the Montague model, which is a more extensive model certainly than what I had drafted back 15 months ago. And really, part of the reason it's more extensive is because it cites to some of the terminology that is being used in the new legislation, and specifically, in the new regulations. Again, distinguishing between types of cultivation and processing facilities, indoor and outdoor, distinguishing between those facilities and testing facilities, speaking to retail sales, speaking to these locations where the product can be consumed, marijuana cafes, for lack of a better term. So that's a more extensive approach to zoning, but it is an all-in approach in the sense that you're covering the topic from start to finish, and there's certainly something to be said for that. So I think, again, the purpose of these meetings, as I understand it, is to take public input on the various opinions that members of the public have concerning these types of facilities, whether they want them or don't want them, where they might want to see them, and then to engage in the zoning process, where we look not only at what I drafted 15 months ago, but at some of these models from other communities, and decide the approach that Deerfield wants to take to allowing or disallowing these facilities in certain locations. You probably know, and I, maybe I should have started with this, but I presume that you've had the discussion, or at least you've been made aware, that the legislation is quite clear, that municipal authority is limited with respect to allowance or disallowance of these sorts of facilities. As a community that voted yes back in November of 2016, as most did in Massachusetts, you've got to go through a two-step process if you were to opt to disallow these facilities on a townwide basis, or limit the number of these facilities. You would need to first adopt a bylaw, generally, it's a general bylaw paired with a zoning bylaw, but then you'd also need to go the route of a referendum question to get the public to vote in favor of banning these facilities. Some communities have taken that approach, I will say that most have not. Most have said, we want to zone it the way that we zone other sorts of facilities, other sorts of uses in our community, and they've decided where these sorts of facilities would be appropriate in terms of specific districts. Some communities have adopted overlay districts, if they don't feel that they have in place an appropriate zoning scheme to allow these uses in their existing districts. And then they've submitted them to a certain process. Typically, it's a site plan review or a special permit process, because your board and other boards in town are already familiar with that process, and so there's no need to reinvent the wheel. Who you designate as the site plan review authority, or the special permit granting authority, is sort of up to you. Some communities have opted to make the planning board that authority, because often, your planning board will issue site plan approvals more than others would. Other communities have created new boards, or have opted to designate their selectmen as the site plan review or special permit granting authority. So again, these are the sorts of questions that need to be asked, and the sorts of questions on which you need to take public input, and ultimately, arrive at a recommendation yourselves, and you can provide that feedback to me, provide that feedback to the other consultants who are assisting on this project, and we will work to craft whatever type of zoning or general bylaws you ask us to craft. And then, of course, there's the usual adoption process that needs to be followed, where ultimately, those will be presented to town meeting for a vote. With that, unless anybody has any questions, certainly, I'm not going anywhere, so I understand you're going to take some public comment, but if you have questions now, or through the process, certainly feel free to ask, I'm happy to help out where I can.
So I have a few of the framing questions, maybe, but anybody else? What, so the question is, what if the town, what if we did nothing as far as zoning goes? What does that look like?
Sure.
Because we, and I should just let everybody know, so the town has these zoning bylaws, and they're based on areas, zones, residential agriculture, center village, commercial, industrial, and then under those, there's the different types of businesses. And so if someone comes in and wants to put in a business, we all look at this, and we say, well, it's, you know, it's a automatic, it can go in these zones, it can't go in these zones, or it needs a special permit in these other zones. Right now, there's nothing in our zoning that says anything about marijuana, so therefore, it's not listed as a use. So if we didn't do anything, what would, what would that, what would the result be?
Sure. So the usual, the usual answer to that question with respect to uses that aren't specifically identified in your zoning bylaw is if they're not identified, they're prohibited. In fact, I believe you have a statement in your zoning bylaw that a former partner of mine might have added when it was recodified a decade or more ago, that says, any use that is not specifically identified herein shall be deemed prohibited. That's standard language in most zoning bylaws in Massachusetts. However, the exception to that rule is the types of uses that are protected either by statute or by special legislation. So for example, you couldn't prohibit churches or educational institutions, because they're subject to protection under the Dover Amendment in Massachusetts. So even if you didn't list those in your zoning bylaw, they would be deemed allowed in every district by virtue of the fact that they're subject to protection under Massachusetts state law. Similarly, although not subject to that same particular statute, marijuana establishments per special legislation now have been allowed in Massachusetts communities. So if you didn't specifically take action to prohibit them through that process of adopting an appropriate bylaw, and then submitting the question to a referendum vote, and you also chose not to zone them in the particular districts, they would be allowed. And we'd have to look more closely at your zoning bylaw to see whether an argument could be made that they would be allowed only in certain districts, maybe as a subcategory of other sorts of manufacturing or industrial-type uses, or other types of retail sales, or an argument could well be made that they're allowed in any district. But you couldn't, by virtue of doing nothing, prohibit them, because there's this very specific process that the legislature has established, if you wish to prohibit them, and you wouldn't have followed that process. For the same reason, you have to sort of be mindful about how you zone them, and I didn't want to state this originally, because I assume that we'll get into this discussion as the, as the night goes on, but you got to be careful in terms of determining where these sorts of facilities can be allowed, because you also can't essentially enact a de facto prohibition on the use. So I've had communities say, well, we'll allow it in one district, which happens to be the smallest district in our town, it's comprised of 25 parcels, all of these parcels are an acre, and we're going to allow it on parcels of five acres or more, and that are currently undeveloped, and 75% of these are already developed, and so we have in essence prohibited the use. The legislature will see through that, that's not allowed.
Could you briefly explain, given what you just said, the difference between marijuana and medical marijuana?
Sure. So.
Which, just to remind people, we did create zones for medical marijuana a year ago, yeah.
Yes. So the medical marijuana legislation, as you know, passed a number of years ago legalizing it here in the Commonwealth. And so many municipalities adopted either medical marijuana zoning, or overlay districts within which these sorts of facilities could be, could be developed, whether they be facilities for the cultivation of medical marijuana, or for the actual dispensing of the marijuana itself. The terminology to use was medical marijuana treatment centers, MMTCs, were the terminology that was often used. RMDs, registered marijuana dispensaries, is another term that is used in that original legislation. The new legislation essentially shifts the responsibility for the oversight of that program from the Department of Public Health over to the new Cannabis Control Commission, the CCC, which was established under the new legislation. They're the ones who have recently adopted these draft regulations that are due to be finalized by mid-March. So the terminology that's used, what many communities have done, Montague's a good example, it uses the term marijuana establishment. Well, under the new legislation, marijuana establishment is an all-encompassing term. It includes not only these facilities that would be cultivating or dispensing recreational marijuana, but also those that would be cultivating or dispensing medical marijuana. So it's all-inclusive, it includes those registered marijuana dispensaries, or medical marijuana treatment centers, within the umbrella of marijuana establishments. And that's why you see, for example, in the Montague model, that they have essentially said, in that instance, they're going to delete in its entirety the provisions of their zoning that address registered marijuana dispensaries, and replace it with this whole new scheme that is all-encompassing, including both medical and recreational.
So since Deerfield already has a medical marijuana district, or overlay, if you will, we have done something, so it isn't like we're doing nothing. Would that be correct?
It would be in the sense that you've zoned for medical marijuana. The legislature isn't going to deem you to have satisfied the legislative edict, for lack of a better term, via the November 2016 vote that legalized recreational marijuana, simply because you're allowing medical marijuana there. Although the term marijuana establishment is all-encompassing, you can't just allow medical and have satisfied the requirements under the new legislation.
If it was all-encompassing, why, why do they differentiate?
Because within the legislation itself, it differentiates between medical and recreational, but for purposes of regulating it in many respects, it uses that general term.
Okay. And then another question that came up last month was the federal laws regarding marijuana, and how does that play into it, and is it kind of a moving target, I think?
It is, and that's, I think, probably the best way to characterize it. There are many challenges that exist with marijuana legalization and with the regulating of marijuana on a municipal basis. Marijuana is a, is a, it's unlawful under federal law, it's lawful here in Massachusetts as it is in a number of other states. There have been questions about what actions federal government could take against municipalities. The answer to that question is, we don't know. All indications are, there have been communities in other states that have, in other states themselves, that have legalized recreational marijuana prior to Massachusetts doing so. There have been no actions taken by the federal government against those states, or against those municipalities as a consequence of their efforts to legalize it. But there are practical challenges that exist as well. I've had conversations with, with business owners, with banking institutions about the challenges that exist getting financing for these sorts of facilities, because of the fact that many banks don't want to touch them, because of the challenges that exist on a federal level with respect to providing funds, lending funds for the purpose of developing these sorts of facilities. So there are some challenges that exist, it's a moving target in many respects, and Massachusetts, as has been the case, you know, in many areas of law, is sort of on the forefront here, one of the rare few states that have legalized this.
So just to, having said that, does that preclude us from doing anything, or we should still move ahead and do planning and bylaw development?
So our recommendation to the municipalities that we represent, and I think it's consistent across the industry, because I, of course, speak regularly with other town councils in other communities, is that we recommend to our communities that they be proactive, and they zone for, they either be proactive and zone for recreational marijuana, or if it is the desire of the community, they can take steps to prohibit it on a townwide basis, that is always an option. But we do act, we do advocate for a proactive approach, because doing nothing puts you in the position that I described before. It doesn't exempt you from the law, the law still applies, the law still requires you to allow for these facilities, because, again, the legislature has spoken on the state level, and notwithstanding the concerns that might exist with respect to the federal government, and what action it could possibly take, you're still bound by, by the legislative action that was taken back in 2016, and then more recently, modified, amended.
Great. So when you say that, on this opt-out, and you're talking to two steps, first, to zone, create a bylaw, create bylaws that would regulate the cultivation and processing, at very least, right? Particularly, cultivation and processing, not necessarily retail in every town, is that, is that the case? I'm not clear on that.
Sure, so maybe I can be a bit clearer in how I explained it. So municipalities have two options with respect to recreational marijuana. They can either choose to embark upon a path where they would ultimately prohibit facilities within their communities. To do that, you need to begin with a bylaw, it's a relatively simple bylaw, it says that the facilities are prohibited.
Okay.
And that would be joined with the need for.
A referendum.
A referendum vote, if you're in a community that voted yes. If you're in a community that voted no, you can actually just adopt the bylaw, and you're done.
And go, right, right, right.
That doesn't apply here. So you'd have to go through that two-step process. That's option A. Option B is to say, we're simply going to zone for it. We're not going to go the route of attempting to prohibit it in our community, either because you believe there are benefits to it, because you don't believe you can get the vote to prohibit it. And if you go that route, then you would want to engage in a more comprehensive zoning approach, something like what Montague has done, and that's not the only, that's not the only option that's out there in terms of zoning approaches. I mentioned before, you can create overlay districts, you can, you can rely on other aspects of your existing zoning to try to craft zoning provisions that would allow for these sorts of facilities where you deem them appropriate. But it's a more comprehensive zoning approach, because you're providing a process for these sorts of facilities to be permitted in certain districts, in certain locations, within an overlay district, and you're differentiating between the different types of facilities that exist.
Let me also go down that path, the opt-out path. So you make as a board, or as a, at a town meeting, and you zone no, no place in this town, and then you bring it to a referendum, and it doesn't pass, you're back to square one?
Correct.
Okay. And then you're, are you vulnerable in that regard, or how vulnerable would be, would the municipality be at that point if?
You're in the same position that you'd be in if you actually, if you took absolutely no action today.
Right.
If you didn't zone for it.
Yeah, okay.
Which means there's no prohibition in place, and there's no regulation of it.
No regulation in place as well, right, right, right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions, or? All right, thanks very much.
And again, I'm not going anywhere, so if you've got further questions.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll have things for you. And I would like to recognize, we have actually three of our, three select board members here tonight, and I know this has been discussed at select board meetings, so I was wondering if we could maybe get, is there a summary or something we could get from the select board, maybe, to help us, so we're not just repeating things?
Um.
Carolyn Ness.
Carolyn Ness, Chair of the Board of Health and Board of Selectment at the moment. I have been involved with this, with Dick, since this first came out as medical marijuana, and the whole idea was to be proactive. We have an overlay district, our intention is to use that as the restrict for recreational outlets, and, you know, adopt the 3% local sales tax, and, and hopefully, have cultivation in our residential agricultural area. And the reason why is to make sure that we have protection, that we just don't have it randomly popping up all over town. And the idea is to only allow one retail outlet for recreational. It's 20% of your liquor licenses, so we are okay with one, and just regulate it as best we can and protect our community. It's coming, so, and the whole idea is to account for every single cost, so it is not subsidized by the taxpayers at all, and to be as proactive as possible. We, Dick and I have gone to several meetings over the course of the last three or four years. We've tried to stay on top of this, I have every intention, after going to the Homeland Security Meeting tomorrow morning, to run up to the FERCOG to make sure that, you know, I've attended the public hearing that the Cannabis Commission is, is having. But the fact is, we, you know, someone applies for a license, it's going to happen, so it's up to us to be proactive and to control it as best we can. And so it has, you know, mitigate any negative impacts to the community, and make sure that they are as positive as possible.
Great. Have you had any, you haven't had a public hearing at the select board at all, right?
No, no, it's, we're going through the planning board. We're going through the planning board. You know...
All right. That's good.
You know...
All right. And the meeting tomorrow that she's referring to is at the FERCOG. It's a public hearing of the Cannabis Control Commission, right? At 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock at the...
Correct.
...non-over building there, the FERCOG office? So, everybody's encouraged to go to those.
And the idea is, again, just to be as proactive as possible, make sure we have positive impact and that we have control.
Thanks.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Just relative to retail and product? Because that was one of the FERCOG's concerns, was about edible consumption, you know, that edibles are a major issue relative to availability to broader spectrum of people.
Well, I think that's one of the reasons it's so important that we have regulations, because, you know, our health agent would do the inspections...
Yeah.
And all amounts of what's in the... Whatever edible it is...
Yeah.
Is very concise and is measured and is, you know, protects the consumer, because obviously if you have all these random things happening with no control, the amounts of whatever is in it, it can be very much, very, and impact people tremendously. So, the idea is to have legitimate, good whoever it is apply to the license, the one license that we're willing to give out, and that we have a good relationship with that person to make sure, or that company, to make sure that we absolutely control everything.
Thank you. So, at the end of our last month, we talked about the planning board sort of was looking into three options. One, the opt-out option. The other is to update a draft of the bylaws, and then another is a potential moratorium. So, I guess largely being the planning board, we're interested in zoning, and we've kind of broke this up into zoning of cultivation versus retail, and that seemed to be the major subject last meeting. So, I guess, anybody have any comments about cultivation of marijuana and how we could zone for that?
Are you separating it from processing? Or are you...
Well, I guess that gets back to a question, but there is all the definitions of what is... Cultivation and processing go together? Adam, is that something we're clear about, or we have some other experts in the room, too?
So, it depends upon how you craft your zoning. When I prepared the draft, again, this was prior to the Cannabis Control Commission's draft regulations that were released of late, when I prepared the draft 14, 15 months ago, I had sort of lumped those terms together, because that was the instruction that was given to me at the time, that there was a desire to zone for both the cultivation and ultimately the processing of recreational marijuana in Deerfield. Based upon the recently issued regulations, yet to be finalized, you can certainly distinguish between those. And I think, I have a copy of the Montague model. I believe that it does exactly that. It speaks to marijuana cultivation, product manufacture as a separate entry in the Table of Use Regulations, in addition to transportation, research, et cetera. So, it gets quite specific in terms of the different uses.
All right. We have a couple of copies of the draft Cannabis Control Commission regulations here, too. They separated by marijuana cultivation, and then marijuana product manufacturers, then storefront and delivery retail sale, and then social consumption.
And that's how...
Seems to be the way that they're...
Right. And that's how the Montague model divides it up, too. I mean, most of these models I've seen are referencing the terminology, as you should, that's used in the statute or the regulations. You should mimic that. That would be my recommendation. Again, not having that clarity back 14, 15 months ago, we had utilized the terms together. If you're going to take a more holistic approach to this, based upon the recently issued draft regulations, then I would recommend that they be separated out if you indeed wish to regulate them differently. There's no need to necessarily separate them out if you're going to allow both of those uses in all of the same districts. Again, you can use the terminology, but you could lump them into one entry in your Table of Use Regulations.
All right. I've got a question. I've been reading in the papers, there've been a lot of issues, and some communities are drafting zoning regulations. Some are using the approach of a moratorium to see how things are going to play out, and some are trying to ban it.
Right.
So, now, we'll say we went with a moratorium, and it passed. Someone comes in to apply for permit. We really have no regulations. We just have a hold on it. So, what would happen?
Well, that's the purpose of the moratorium. They couldn't make... I suppose anybody can walk in and hand an application to the town.
Right.
But the application isn't received by the town. There's no right to...
Right.
Develop a facility while the moratorium is in effect.
So, they couldn't go forward. They couldn't...
That's correct. So, moratoria have been used, I mean, historically, for all types of uses. You've got moratoriums that are related to the rate of growth in communities that have seen exponential rates of growth and have been concerned and need to get a handle on how they can manage that growth in their community. They've adopted rate of development bylaws, and they've initially done so through a moratorium. We saw attempted moratoria on cell towers, which, many of which were stricken down because of the Federal Telecommunications Act. But there's been an effort to use these moratoria to regulate newer subjects to the area of zoning. But what the courts have consistently said, when they review the legitimacy of these moratoria, is that you need to be sure that there's a public planning process that is the rationale for requiring the moratorium, and that is being undertaken while the moratorium is in effect. And so, that's how you justify the need for it. We're not prepared at present to address this issue. It's a new issue of law. We need 12 months, 15 months, 18 months to give us the opportunity to do so, and so we're adopting the moratorium. But at the end of that 12, 15, 18 months, you're expected to be ready to go. And the courts have stricken down moratoria that have been for too lengthy a period, those that have tried to be renewed after an initial term, because there has been no evidence that that public planning process has been underway. You just need to be sure that you've got the justification for it, and then that you follow through.
So, if we chose to present all three of those options to our voters, because obviously I voted in favor at one time, and as time played along, I've learned different things. So, maybe I've changed my opinion, and maybe the voters in Deerfield have also. So, say we give them all three options, they pick one, and we go down that route, and we zone for recreation marijuana, or they choose to the moratorium or opt-out. So, then we go the phases that we have to. It's quite a process, it sounds like, if you ban it completely. So, would we be vulnerable if we were in that process?
While you're in the process, yes. I mean, remember that there are no licenses being issued until this summer. So, if the objective here is to proceed with the process you just described, and to do so in time for your annual town meeting, then you will have taken action prior to licensing, licenses issuing. You could certainly go the route that you just described. I will say that there are some complexities involved in giving that many options to the voters, and I'm entirely in favor of giving options to the voters.
Yeah.
But the idea behind pursuing a bylaw that would... A zoning bylaw that would regulate, in the manner that we're discussing, something like the Montague model, for example, while simultaneously pursuing an outright prohibition, which is done by bylaw and then by subsequent referendum vote, you've got to... While simultaneously pursuing a moratorium, you're talking about three separate warrant articles. You've got to structure those such that they can't all three pass.
Well, right.
So, you've got to structure them such that they're in an appropriate sequence on the town meeting warrants, so that if the first one passes, that you're passing over the next two or indefinitely postponing them. It can get quite challenging. I will say that I've not had many communities attempt to do all three.
But wouldn't it sort of be like when you have one seat, and there's three candidates that run for that one seat? You would just make it that you choose, vote for one of these options? And so, obviously, there'd be a winner or a loser, or whatever.
I understand the approach. It's obviously a bit more complicated when you're talking about crafting bylaws to address each of these circumstances...
Yeah.
And preparing for a referendum vote.
Yes.
That's the challenge.
Interesting. Thanks. I see we have someone who wants to speak.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dick Evans. I'm a lawyer in Northampton, and I was Chair of the Yes on Four campaign in 2016. And I'm here in two capacities. One is just a neighbor of the town, eager to see you guys do the right thing. And the other is, I'm eager to see Pioneer Gardens being zoned in such a way that they could convert to a cultivation operation. I wanted to answer your question about processing. Under the formal definition of cultivation that's in both the statute and the regulations, processing is part of cultivating. So, you'd be zoning for cultivation, you'd be zoning for product manufacture, and zoning for retail. Those are really the three uses of land, marijuana-related uses of land, that you'd need to assign zoning districts to. You know, it's really a question of filling in boxes and putting PA or SPD or yes or no, or whatever it is, in the various boxes. That's how you would zone for each of those activities.
So, they're separate? You're saying cultivation and the creation of product?
Yes. Cultivation, manufacture, and retail. Separate, totally separate.
But you say cultivation and processing, so it's the...
They go together.
Right. But the processing is different than product manufacturing?
That's right.
Because that's a word that people might get.
That's right.
But they're in this, look at two different levels.
Cultivation and processing are inextricable. And manufacture and retail are two other categories.
Could you explain processing, please?
Yeah. Harvesting, bundling, packaging, you know, and bulk. That's all it is.
Product manufacturing is the one that...
So, it's really the primary level of processing, not the product?
Yeah.
So, product manufacturing is a whole nother... That's a whole nother step.
Whole nother step. Lots of rules.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd point out that the CCC is really doing all the heavy lifting for you. They have developed all the rules, 107 pages of rules regarding security and vetting of applicants and so forth. Fortunately, you don't have to get into that at all. You just need to decide what can happen where. That's really your challenge, it seems to me.
Thanks.
Be happy to answer any other questions, if you have. I'll be around for a while, too.
All right. I must say that the last month, it did seem like there was some... We were going... It seemed like we were going in the direction of cultivation, that we did want to zone... We would have made some decisions, sort of, on zoning for cultivation. That's why I kind of brought that up first, to see if there was any other input on that, that we were considering residential agriculture as being... And I should say that special permits, and so, the different ways we zone is sometimes we say that, yes, and we say by right. That means if this type of business wants to go in this type of place, it's by right. They can just do it. Or we say, no, they can't do it. Or we say special permit, which means they have to come to some board, either the zoning board, the planning board, the select board, or something, to sort of talk about what they're planning on doing, and then the town has some parameters on what they might do, like they can only operate between 7:00 and 7:00, or, you know, something like that. So, that's a special permit. So, I think everything we're talking about here regarding marijuana, we're probably going to put a special permit on it. And that way, the town does have more oversight. Someone can't just come and do it without telling us what they're planning to do. So, we were looking, I think, last month at making residential agriculture, putting a special permit for cultivation of marijuana. So, if that's... Like, if everybody's in agreement, we should just know that now, so we can kind of move forward. We can start drafting bylaws. So, does that... Anybody have a comment on that?
I don't have a comment. I'd like to make a statement.
Sure. Come on up.
I'm here.
We're happy to have you all night, Paul.
Oh, yeah. Sure. I'm here, Paul Shesky, Chairman of the Deerfield Industrial Park, or the Deerfield Economic Development Industrial Corporation. I just wanted to state, so it was on public record, understand that the Deerfield Industrial Park was built in the mid-'70s during an economic downturn. Jack Chuslin, the core people that built it, to fund that, federal and state money was taken to build that, and a significant amount of money. And I think it's most importantly to say, federal money taken to construct that, which has benefited the town in many ways over the years. And I just wanted to say that while the park was placed in the marijuana medical overlay district back a number of years ago, really when we were sort of dormant, Jack was ill and the like, and now that we've basically, for the last four years, have brought the park back to life in many ways, I just wanted to publicly make the planning board aware, based on our rules and regulations for the Deerfield Industrial Park, which are voted and approved and distributed to the property owners and the tenants of the park, that under Chapter 2, I want to say Subsection B, Occupant Responsibilities, one of them, there's a total of eight, and one that is very glaring to us and stands out with this whole situation, because of the fact that marijuana, on a federal level, is illegal, unlawful, whatever you want to call it, is a Class D substance. So, I state, the responsibilities of the occupants of the industrial park are as follows, and like I say, there's eight, of which the one that is number three, and I quote, "to use every parcel in a manner that conforms with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations, including but not limited to laws relating to management of the solid waste, hazardous waste, air, water quality, wetlands, wildlife protection, and so on." But it's what... The reason I'm here is to basically really hammer home the point that to use every parcel in a manner that conforms with all federal and state laws. So, understand that while anyone coming into the park, or a current property owner, whatever, comes to us, they have to bring their site, any kind of improvement, addition, those site plans, all that has to first be approved by the board. And right now, it's... If we were to, you know, to have someone come in and say, I'm going to take such and such parcel, and I want to turn it into manufacturing, or distribution, or a marijuana cafe, or whatever, right there, we would be very... Say, thank you very much, here are our bylaws, and say, it's a federal... We have... You have to comply with federal, you know, with federal and state and local laws, and obviously marijuana being at this point. It has been, currently is, and until someone changes it, it still continues to be an unlawful substance, is a Class D. So, I just want to make you aware that the edict board, this is our position. We are going to monitor this, but even though we are in the overlay district, and I understand that, and I understand why it was done...
Right.
You know, to provide an area in town to do this kind of stuff. We have to stand by, as an edict, because we also report directly to the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development, and we're in contact with them, and we have our own council, and I just want to let it be known that while we are in the overlay, we have to play by our rules.
Which is... And I think the overlay calls it a special permit, so that's one of the things, someone came forward, and they wanted to do it there, you could pull this out and say, you can't do it.
But I just wanted...
That's fine.
The board asked me. We just wanted to have it on public record.
Good.
And however you guys meter this thing out.
Yeah. No, that's helpful. Thanks.
John, can I have a question?
Sure.
For Adam. Oh, I'm sorry. For Adam. Carolyn spoke earlier about the town having a position of only one license for the retail sale, if I understood her correctly. How would that special permitting process, in your eyes, go as far as the cultivation? If we have opened up the town to, say, all of our agricultural area, are the number of licenses there permitted to be restricted? Or is it just, if we allow it, anybody can do it?
So, they are permitted to be restricted. The rule of thumb here is, if you subject these sorts of facilities to a special permit process, your special permit granting authority, whoever you might designate for the purpose of acting on these sorts of applications, can exercise the same sort of discretion that they'd exercise for any other type of special permit, applying the special permit criteria that are found in your bylaw. And if those criteria aren't satisfied, that authority has the full range of discretion available to it to deny or appropriately condition if it chooses to approve that particular project. The only thing that I cautioned you, and I had said earlier, would be a circumstance where the special permit granting authority were exercising that authority, that special permit authority, so broadly, and in such a way that it was just denying any application that came forth, essentially operating as a de facto denial of any kind of facility within the town. I think that would cause the legislature to raise an eyebrow and say, what's really occurring here? But short of that, yes. I also want to make it clear that we ought to distinguish between the zoning processes, which is what we're here to discuss tonight, and a potential licensing process. So, there's nothing in the legislation, or even the new... or even the newly promulgated regulations in draft form, that prohibits a municipality from adopting a local licensing process. That's sort of separate and apart from the zoning question, how it's zoned, where it's zoned, the question of whether there's a local license required for it. Again, that can be something that is dealt with separately, typically entirely apart from zoning, and in addition to whatever state process might exist. I will concur with what was said a moment ago by Attorney Evans, which is that the Cannabis Control Commission has very heavily regulated this subject. I mean, that's sort of a component of the Massachusetts legislation, maybe even more so than legislation that's been adopted in some other states, is that these substances are very heavily regulated. There are provisions of not only the statute, but also now the regulations that deal with everything from the testing of these products, to the types of products that can be manufactured, to the security of these sorts of facilities, to inspections. It's all within the state regulations.
And I understand that, but where I was thinking, where I was going with my thoughts, and if we open the town up to the cultivation in all of our agricultural areas, and then we also decide that we're going to, say, limit it to one license, or permit, if you will, how does it, what position does it put the town in if we have three people all, you know, bidding for this one license? We can't necessarily have a hearing on one without discriminating on the other. Do you hear them all, three, at the same time, or do you just accept the applications and review them independently, and then choose one?
From a zoning perspective, you need to review each of them on their merits, and of course, you run the risk therefore that multiple applications meet the special permit criteria and ought to be approved by the special permit granting authority. I would argue that insofar as the intent of the town is only to permit a single facility, and it believes that that will satisfy its obligations under the legislation, that it do so through the licensing process and not through the zoning process.
I get it. Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions for Paul about industrial, plan industrial park?
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. So again, I talk about cultivation, and again, cultivation isn't just in the farm fields, and that's why we had, for the medical marijuana, we said it was permissible in the industrial park, because people can do this indoors as well. But any other thoughts on, for zoning, making residential agriculture a special permit in terms of marijuana cultivation and processing?
I'm against it.
Do you want to speak to that?
That was a comment.
Okay. You want to speak to it?
I don't think that cultivating or selling marijuana is a suitable or a reasonable use for residential agricultural property.
Anything else?
Well, we've addressed marijuana cultivation and sales with medical marijuana, and decided then that medical marijuana was suitable in industrial zoned areas because of its, the nature of its security and the type of facilities that you would need to cultivate it in a secure, you know, manner. And I just don't think that residential agricultural is suitable. You know, that what you're going to have to do to secure it is going to infringe on its neighbors.
Any other comments? As several people have referred to the regulations, they take care of all the security issues, so we don't, as a town, have to. And it might, as part of the special permit, it would obviously make some places probably not appropriate for it, but that's not something we have to get into.
I wonder if the state has addressed that. Like, Adam referred to fields and stuff. Are they going to let it be allowed to grow in an open field with no type of security around it, whatever?
No. That's in the 177 pages.
So there is a reference to outdoor cultivation, but to answer your direct question, no, not without any security around it. There are security provisions that need to be satisfied in not only the statute, but then, of course, expounded upon in the newly promulgated regulations. I would agree with the chairman's comment that the regulations are extensive, what most communities have done. And there are a few, even dating back to the medical marijuana legislation, which was also quite comprehensive. And the medical marijuana regulations also provided for security provisions. I saw some communities, when they adopted overlay districts, when they adopted zoning for medical marijuana, they would typically include, and it's what I included here in the version of zoning that I had proposed 12 or 15 months ago, I had included a provision to the effect that the facility shall be fully in compliance with the applicable statute and regulations, and, you know, all provisions there under relative to security and testing, et cetera. Most communities have done that with medical, and then some saw fit to include additional requirements if they felt it was important. You know, 24-hour contact information shall be provided to the chief of police in the event of emergency, things like that, that were maybe specific to the town, that were not already incorporated within the state regulations. But generally, you would want to include in whatever zoning you adopt, an explicit reference to the state regulations and a requirement that there be full compliance.
So do you have any idea what it takes to make an open field secure? That's, I guess, the question I was asking you.
I could walk through the regulations, but I can't, off the top of my head, I can't give you the specifics as to the requirements, but they go on for pages in terms of what exactly is required for security.
Well, I know they're probably lengthy, but I just wondered if it was a building, fences, whatever.
Enclosure, yes. Yeah.
Anybody else want to answer that?
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't read off to you what those requirements are. While he was talking, I was able to page through to that section. So this is the security and alarm requirements for marijuana establishments operating at an open cultivation facility, and that's distinguished from an enclosed one. It requires perimeter security fence designed to prevent unauthorized entry, commercial-grade non-residential locks, a security alarm system that's continuously monitored, provides alerts to designated employees within five minutes. They also require video cameras at all points of entry and exit, and in any parking lot. It's appropriate for normal lighting commissions. Cameras have to be angled a certain way. There has to be 24-hour recordings from all cameras. A lot of it, a lot of detail here about the availability of those recordings, and how long they're kept, and so forth. Access to surveillance areas are limited, all security equipment in good working order, security plans and procedures shared with local law enforcement. So, as Mr. Costa said, very extensive requirements here, already written out for you in these draft regulations.
Thank you. Starts on page 72.
70, in the 177?
72, 73, 74 of the 177.
177-page document.
Any other comments?
I just have a question. I guess one of my questions is, Carolyn said that it was 20% of the liquor stores, you know, so 20%, so we could have one. But the question is, is, you know, is it going to be a liquor's 44, or something small? So I would assume the licensing would affect the size of the space, the size of the farm or the cultivation area. It's not, you know, we might have one, but it's not necessarily going to be, you know, acres and acres and acres and acres. It could be a small...
I was referring to retail outlets.
Oh, okay, retail outlets?
Yeah. The state allows us to limit that to 20% of our liquor licenses, so that means we can have one. I mean, we can have more.
Right. Okay.
We only have to allow one, and we've met the requirement for retail.
Right. But I guess...
And her question is about the size. It could be smaller, it could be bigger.
The size of the facility, the growing facility, I mean...
That would be part of the licensing.
That's part of the licensure, and that's where we have the special permit to oversee that. And so I would say, what you were saying in terms of the special permit and the residential agriculture, that seems to make sense to me, what the chairman said.
And I, you know, again, just the special permit, it looks at, it consults with all town officers and departments, including police, fire, health. So that's all part of the special permitting, and it has to get the kind of approval from everybody. In general, what the special permit does, it tries to determine that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood. That's in sort of the general concept of special permits. So we check with everybody. There is also a, special permits need to have all the neighbors are notified, right, Pat?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, so nothing's going to...
All 300-foot of butters.
300-foot of butters. So nothing just pops up when there's a special permit involved. So, thanks. Yep?
I just want to say, one of the reasons that I feel so important to be proactive on this is because we have one of the best police departments, or the best police department in Franklin County. And from my seat on homeland security, I would say that's definitely one of the top of Esther Mas. And so we want our police department to oversee the security. We don't want to inherit problems by having it, like, just over the line of the Sugar Love shops or something like that. We want to be able to control it and have our police department oversee all this kind of stuff. So it's very important to me that we be proactive so that they will be able to be the ones that, and making sure that the impacts are minimal to us as a community.
And I'm sure Waitley will do the same, as neighboring towns will, too. I just had mine, and this one's here, so if someone wants to do it. Yes, come on up.
Yes, I'm a friend with Pioneer Gardens, and I would like to recommend the planning board to vote, or to make a recommendation in favor of opening up cannabis production to agricultural companies, the farming community in town. I believe that the farming community is the perfect industry to take on the cannabis business, because it's a perfect match in terms of our current know-how that we already have. It is like 95% of the know-how that we have in our industry matches what's required for cannabis production. As you probably know, we have had quite a few lean years in the farming industry in the past few years. This is also an opportunity for diversification. I can give you maybe some numbers. We grow perennials at Pioneer Gardens, that is a $2 billion industry. Cannabis is not even legalized in every state. It's about, I believe, in 60% of the states, 80% of the US population, so it's a majority. People have been voting in favor of it. It's an $8 billion industry already, so it's four times bigger than the perennials that we grow. And it's only grown in certain states, and it's growing by leaps and bounds. So what does that mean? That means for the town of Deerfield, for example, with a change of zoning, immediate, direct investment, capital investment in the town, it will mean well-paying jobs, which the farming community needs as well, year-round, full-time employment with good wages and benefits. That certainly will be a direct result of changing the zoning law, I have no doubt about it. I think, for example, in Deerfield, it could mean, you know, it's a guess, but I think it's realistic that when everything is in full swing, it could mean 100 additional jobs. I think it's very realistic. And also, don't forget, if we vote not in favor, we're not the only game in town. We got 300 other towns in Massachusetts, and they'll run with it. So we have nothing. So that's the other option. So, you know, the voters have voted, and I think choice is up to us to, the way I see it, to basically go with the wishes of the voters, make the best of it, make it happen. And...
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I think I've been wrapping my head so much around cultivating and processing, and now I'm thinking about product manufacturing. What, because you'd have to, there's another step here that I'm missing, and I'm, I have concerns. I don't even have an idea for what that is, what that looks like. Do you have any sense for that?
We would be the cultivators.
Right.
Yeah.
So then you go to, that's a whole new, I know you, I see you, I trust you. The growing part of it, I feel like I got.
Yeah.
The product manufacturing, I, that to me is like, is very foreign. I don't...
Right. That would be another company.
That's a whole nother...
Pioneer Gardens is a cultivator, is a grower.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not a manufacturer.
But do you know anything about, I'm just asking you, since you must have done more research on this than me, about what product manufacturing looks like? Who does that?
I think it's a high-tech, very, it's already getting very well-regulated industry, comparable to the food industry.
So you wouldn't do that at all?
No, that's not Pioneer Gardens, no.
So who would you sell your product to?
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
You'd grow it, and then what?
We sell it to the marketplace.
The marketplace, what address is that? I'm just...
We just don't know.
Right now, yeah.
We just don't know who that is yet. That step is missing.
Consumers, and consumers, you would sell it to a product manufacturing company.
No, no, we would team up with a professional company. Right now, we're talking.
Yeah.
You know, with harvesting, and they will take it from there.
So you'd be selling wholesale?
Correct.
So where would the, would it be the 3% cap tax on the wholesale, and then again on the retail?
Correct. Right?
Somebody know how that works?
Yeah, there you go.
It's just...
All on retail.
It's just 3% retail.
Oh.
But...
Yes, the 3% tax that the state allows the city and town to collect is only on retail sales. However, for any marijuana establishment, and that is a cultivator, a manufacturer, or retailer, or a micro-business, or a craft co-op, or research facility, or testing lab, for them to operate in any community, they have to pass, or to work out, a community host agreement with the town. And the statute, the law allows the community to exact up to 3% of gross sales of a marijuana establishment as part of a community impact fee, which is part of the community host agreement. Does that answer your question?
Well, that leads me to a question. If, here's no sales, I mean, the sales tax is only on the retail portion of it, and the host agreement compensation you spoke of is something independent, but the cultivation of marijuana is not considered a farming use, correct?
That's why you have that separate bylaw.
So, so through taxation, if you have, let's say you have a two-acre greenhouse that grows perennials, regardless of the value of it, if you have the same warehouse now growing marijuana that is a $50 million business, the assessors can then say that that greenhouse operation has a value of $50 million and tax it accordingly. Would that be an incorrect statement?
Well, would they be correct in trying to, I think that would be, they have difficulty in establishing that 50 million was the fair and reasonable value of the fair market value of the property, because they're obliged to, the assessors are obliged to determine fair market value.
But it's also, the assessment doesn't just go on the fair market value of the property, it goes on its ability to make income. And I can give you, a good example is right on the corner here in town, where you have a vacant lot that is assessed at, say, $20,000. On the same-sized lot across the street where there's a bank, and the bank does $10 million worth of business, that property is assessed at $1 million. And they're both the same parcels of land, it's just one's ability to make income.
It's an economic impact.
And that's a portion of an assessor's job. So, you know, then, that's what, you get back to this greenhouse, if you spent $100,000 on the greenhouse, it could conceivably, could be assessed at $20 million, because that's the amount of revenue that was coming, or the value of the product being processed.
Well, I'm not aware that assessors take potential earning capacity into account when they determine fair market value of land. My guess is that the bank is valued at $1 million, because there's a building there.
Yeah. It also does go by its ability, I'm just, it's also by its ability.
Well, in a sense, they also check if you're getting rents from an apartment building, they check on what the income, so it's past experience, more than... they check on what the income, so it's past experience more than what it might make, but what it has made.
Not potential, sure.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, I think. So, and that's probably a new area that we'll be getting into, this issue. Is this relative to this?
Yes. Trevor and I, at the MMA conference a couple weeks ago, visited the Board of Assessors, you know, professional group, and it is fluid right now on how they will tax cannabis marijuana stuff. It's still up, no one has come up with any real guidelines yet, but it also depends if it's a corporation, if it's incorporated as a corporation, or it's incorporated as partners, and all that's going to be planned into the decision, and the assessors' professional group will make a determination. It's part of, you know, once the cannabis commission starts issuing licenses and all that kind of stuff this summer, all these things will get sorted out for us as towns by the assessors' groups, and, you know, there's all kinds of other regulations that are still up in the air that have been sorted out yet.
Alright, thanks. So, I want to ask, is there any, so when you look at special permits, it's for the benefits outweigh the detriments. What would be the downside of cultivation in an agricultural area? Does anybody have any? With, you know, based on all the security and all these issues that we're all concerned about, but I think these are mostly addressed in this, so I just want to-
Well, I can tell you that another community in the area, some people on the planning board sent out like a questionnaire to the 14 towns in Massachusetts that have medical dispensaries, and they wrote to the mayor, or the town manager, or the selectman, or the police chief, and board of health, and such, and said, "What's been the problems in your towns from having a medical dispensary?" And the only negative comment they got was related to odor. Somebody complained that a cultivation facility was exuding an odor. It was, not everybody found pleasant, but that's the worst thing I've heard, is odor. And I might say that the reports from other legal states, that we just don't see any reports that the sky's falling in Colorado, or Oregon, or Washington, or Nevada, or California.
That's a very interesting thing, is that I'm going to have, I'm extremely naive in this area, but does marijuana not being burned have a distinct odor?
Yes.
So, if there are people noticing this from a dispensary, what happens if you have two acres of it all concentrated? Do the people inside this, if, let's assume it's inside, do they have to wear special apparatus to breathe so they don't become high?
Oh, no, no, but there are odor attenuation techniques and technologies that are pretty routine.
But then, if you have, it's something that we should, I guess, think about. If you have exhaust fans from this, the neighbors from 300 feet, would they be affected by it? I couldn't know.
That's exactly the sort of thing you would question in a special permit discussion. And we have some information.
Just a little bit.
If you want people on TV to hear, you got to come up to the mic.
Trevor McDaniel, Selectman, Board of Health, Deerfield. If you go online and do, I've been studying a lot of this issue recently, and if you go online, there's a lot of YouTube videos of, well, just for instance, in Canada, they have medical marijuana. They just had one company hostile take over another company, so it's now a billion-dollar producer of medical marijuana. They do a YouTube video of their facility and the security that's involved, and the apparatus, the hairnets, the, you know, every door is locked, you've got to go through and passcode, everything that goes in, it's all very sterile, and there's no outside air that can come in there. Everything needs to be, you know, chromatically sealed. So, I'm not sure that you'll get, I mean, maybe that's an old plant or something, but I don't think you'll be getting a smell outside of that, because they're not allowed to let any other air out or any air in. It's all recycled. It's a really high-tech, really high-tech operation, so I can send the link to anyone who's interested, wants to take a tour of a, you know, modern marijuana facility, a grower and producer, and again, they must just ship off, and then somebody else manufactures for medical marijuana and sending them out, so I don't think odor is going to be a huge, huge issue.
So, you say this is a multi-multi-million dollar industry?
Billion.
Billion.
Billions, wow.
First I heard of it as $8 billion in the US.
What would you compare that industry to? Tobacco, maybe?
For example, yeah, yeah.
I've got a question for the audience. Obviously, you're representing Pioneer growers, and I'm just wondering, Kip made it sound like it's going to be in a building or something, and so this is the people that are proposing to growing it. Are you proposing to grow in a building or out in an open field?
The greenhouse, they're proposing to maintain the greenhouse.
Okay, don't ask that question, I just wondered. Anybody else that's going to, thinking about growing it? How are they going to, is it going to be a greenhouse, open field, building? Thank you.
So, maybe just come back to you, Max, so you said you were against it, I'm just, what are the detriments? I'm trying to still get at some of that.
Well, with the security concerns, you know, you put up a perimeter fence, you've got 24-hour cameras, 24-hour cameras, you need 24-hour lights, you know, you have deer run into your perimeter, you got police cars in the middle of the night, you know, with a false alarm. There's just a lot of activity in a residential agricultural area where, you know, if you live next to an agricultural field, they're going to come out during the day, and they're going to do their tractor work, and they're going to do their spraying, and the harvesting, and it's all going to be during the day. There's no nighttime activities. This is going to be a 24/7 thing, security's going to be 24/7, it's, you know, there's a lot of opportunities for nighttime activity.
Well, that's certainly the kinds of things that are normally in a special permit, is when noise can come out of there, and how much light can come out of there.
It's not when, it's when there's a false alarm, the police are activated. When there's, you know, a rabbit trips a sensor, or a deer runs into a, you know, enclosure, somebody's curious how good the security is, you know, it's things like that.
I think by nature, I think the farming industry sometimes has, you know, interruptions with the residency, either a tractor makes noise, or a cow is out, you know, these, if there is a business, there is activity, and if there is activity, you know, then things happen, but I don't think it's, I think it can easily be overcome in terms of the security or the impact on neighbors.
Thanks, alright. We're going to hear from some other folks. Yep?
I just wanted to say, I think mitigating that is part of the cost of operation. I think anybody getting into this business would say, I'm going to do a double fence on the outside, or whatever, you know, whatever it takes, particularly if it is a multi-million dollar operation, I think that's part of the cost of the business, I would assume. And I would also assume that could be written into the regulations, or the bylaw, or the special permit, say, we require, if you can't afford to do that, you can't be in this business.
Anybody else have comments? Yep?
My name is Shaprol, and I'm co-owner of Pioneer Gardens, and I want to just put a little bit of a perspective historically on this. Farmers have always grown different things. You know, Deerfield has gone through its own waves. You know, we had cattle here, and then we went to broom corn and all these things. I'm a sixth-generation farmer, you know, and we had farms in, close to Amsterdam. Why Amsterdam is now, Amsterdam is big as it is now, but we used to have quite a big farm there. They grew tulips, well, first it started with vegetables, commodity crops, then it became tulips and flowers. And if I look at myself here, or, you know, going back to Deerfield, actually, you know, there were a lot of commodity crops, like even, you know, grain crops. Well, people actually used to ferment that stuff and get high on that. You know, that wasn't normal crop, you know, and that's the same now here, too. We have here now a new crop, but farmers have gone through these cycles. So, we employ 40 people year-round. We're giving them three weeks of vacation to start with. There's a couple that have six weeks. That's a lot of benefit. So, we are basically on the top of the pay scale, because we respect our people, they're not seasonal, but how do we keep them employed with this down pressure on prices and all those things? Now, in securities, it's all legitimate, breathing-up questions. They should be solved, but they can be solved, because why would I risk my product being stolen? Now, the other perspective, or the other, you know, relatively, you know, kind of making it a little bit more realistic, we're talking about plants growing in greenhouses. They're probably going to be this big. You really have to steal a truckload for it to be worth it. So, which young kid of 17, or, you know, whoever that might be, is going to actually do that with all that security? It's a product that still needs manufacturing. It's in the beginning stages, it's like growing, again, you know, a barley for Berkshire Brewery, that still needs to become its final product. So, what we are doing is, certainly needs, you know, security, but how much? A lot, to make sure nothing happens. But let's put it also in perspective, that we're not having, you know, a straight-out heroin kind of thing there. That's not what this is. This is a regular herb plant that has eventually a value. So, it's not, you know, so I just want to put that historic perspective on it, growers are growing things, this is just another crop. It can be secured, you know, so that's my take on it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep?
Hello, my name is Chris Bishet, and my vices have always fallen along more traditional lines, gluttony and crap beer. I'm a pot prude. I've never imbibed anything, I've never smoked, never eaten anything, and I plan to keep it that way. And as an employer and a parent, I wish this would go away, but it's not. I agree with Carolyn, I think that we should orchestrate our response. I definitely like the idea of having controlled environments, preferably indoors for me, versus a retail. So, I love the idea of just a single retail outlet, if that's the minimum that we have to do. But I think that there's a lot of angst that I have about this. Like I say, I wish it would go away, but I think that there's a lot of positive here, too, and we've got to kind of learn to live with it. And so, I think we need to steer it in the right direction, make it work for us, and make it have as little negative impact as we possibly can. That's all I got.
Thanks. So, I'm here, and what we'd like to do by the end of this meeting is give our town council some instruction to put together some draft bylaws, or potential warrant articles, I guess. So, right now, I'm here, and I think, you tell me if I'm wrong, but I'd like to propose that you put together a draft bylaw for cultivation and processing in residential agriculture zones in Deerfield, as well as the last time we talked about leaving, also having a special permit in the industrial and the planned industrial zones, and then having a, and then keeping a no in the center residential village, C1, C2, and the EPP district. Is that?
This is just for- Excuse me, John, what are your plans? I mean, they're talking about having one retail establishment.
No, I'm just taking the, I'm sorry, this is cultivation and processing.
It's just cultivating.
We're going to do one at a time.
Okay.
I just wanted to give, start to give some direction to our council to put together some bylaws for those, for the year-long term. And we have our health, are you still something?
He's something, huh?
Help us out, clarify what you are, man.
I'm still out there. I just want to point out one little item that kind of slid over.
Alright, just introduce yourself quickly, please.
Dick Talaszewski, former building commissioner, present health agent.
Thank you.
Okay. I want, I just want to point out one little thing I need to ask Adam, a question which I failed to do earlier.
Yep.
The first question is, I was going to ask Adam, if we do nothing, can somebody pop into town with a store, okay? Not a retail store, a vaping store. I am adamantly opposed to, forget about the retail sales, forget about the growing. I'm adamantly opposed to someone coming into town and having a vaping store where people go in and smoke this, and walk out the door, just like a barroom type atmosphere. So, I would like to have you consider that as part of the retail scenario, because people are going to be able to buy it in another town, they're going to be able to grow it in another town. We just don't need them showing up here, opening up a vaping store, and it's not covered in our bylaw.
So, right now, what would that, where would that fit in our uses?
It would fit anywhere to do retail.
Because it's a, because it's not-
Just like a hairdresser.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That was our intention, is to allow no social consumption establishment.
That's what I wanted to point out to ask Adam.
Vaping is different than marijuana, right?
No, smoking, this is a store for smoking marijuana.
Okay, I wasn't clear on that.
They call it, they call them vaping stores.
But you can vape non-drug-related things, I believe.
This is, this is, go in there and smoke the marijuana.
So, you bring your own product, Dick, or you buy the product from the store?
Yes, you can bring your own product, and pay to go in, and whatever, or you can buy it there. This is what I don't want to see.
Yeah, Adam's going to elaborate.
I'm, just my opinion.
Sure, so that sort of a facility is referred to as a social consumption facility under the regulations, that's the terminology they use?
Thanks, Nick.
And so, you can refer to it as cafe, there's different terminology that's used, casual or regulatory, but yes, it's a subcategory of retail sales.
Can I, I mean, I thought I was on the right track here, but cultivation and processing, we're getting somewhere on that, I think?
I had a question about-
Cultivation and processing?
Yeah, cultivation and processing for your own consumption.
Well, you're allowed six plants, by right.
Is it allowed in a residential, I'm just-
Anywhere, you can have six plants.
Anywhere, okay. So, somebody wants to grow it and process it?
Yep.
For your own consumption? For your own consumption. You know, not opposed to that, it's just someone who wants to make money on it.
When it comes to cultivation and processing, can you permit, can a township permit cultivation and processing and restrict the retail establishments? Is that possible to do?
And restrict, yes. Prohibit altogether, no. And so, let me-
Well, I guess I should have used the word prohibit.
No. Not to less than 20%, which is the reference you heard before with respect to retail. To clarify a point that I made earlier, and Attorney Evans was correct in catching me, because I think I misspoke, or I wasn't clear in distinguishing between what the regulations allow and what I had drafted back 12 or 15 months ago. At the time, I drafted what was called the Marijuana Cultivation and Processing Facility Bylaw. I used the terms cultivation and processing, and I gave them a definition consistent with what was then the statute, but the regulations had not yet been promulgated, and I included in that definition terminology that would include manufacturing and preparation. There's a distinction between preparation, manufacturing, and processing. He is correct in stating that cultivation and processing go hand in hand. Manufacture, preparation of the actual product is a separate, a separate use, or can be a separate use if you choose to designate it as such. It's defined as a separate use in the newly adopted regulations.
Right, at the last meeting, I was, my understanding was that the processing meant making the edibles on site, that's how I took it.
Me, too.
That's manufactured.
Yep.
Preparation or manufacture, different from cultivation and processing. We had structured it to be all one and the same in the bylaw, so I'll take the blame for the confusion, because 12 or 15 months ago, that's what we were doing.
Right.
But now that the regulations exist-
It's moving target.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep. There's another comment, John.
Alright, yep, quickly.
So, my understanding is that Pioneer Gardens or local farms would grow the plants, and then harvest, and it would be shipped off, so it would be like growing digitalis to then send to a pharmaceutical company to make part of it, or it'd be that same sort of thing, where it's-
Or brain to the brain, yes.
Right, or brain, then it's shipped off to the brew company, and you go, yay. So, that's, okay.
Yep.
Don't disturb me.
Like perennials, yes.
Right, or like perennials. Right, or like perennial, yeah.
Right, I don't ship them to the garden.
But, or, yeah.
Right.
Growing copies, and then, oh, never mind.
To the forest. So we go to asking that that's a cultivation and processing, now that we know the definition?
Right, cultivation. Let's just stick with that.
That's good. And we talked about not having any kind of acreage because it's not like you need lots of acres because you don't in greenhouses, so just to get rid of that kind of...
Not necessarily, though. It doesn't have to be in a greenhouse.
No, I know, but they, to put a size of acre, the number of acres on that item isn't really necessary. It's just, the line, Adam, is the use would be cultivation and processing of marijuana, and then zoning would be special permits in a couple of these places.
So we'll say you could do this in our residential agricultural areas, and so you choose to do it, and you want to put up a acre building or whatever size building, it would be allowed?
Special permit.
Right, but I mean, if you went in and...
You took the...
You'd have to beat the rest of our zoning bylaws.
Yes.
Yeah, we have a lot of zoning bylaws, as you know.
Why would you not want to put an acreage restriction?
I didn't, I didn't understand why you'd need to.
You wouldn't need to.
He felt that there wouldn't be a need to grow that many acres of it. That's what I guess.
If you say it has to be five acres, you're only asking for huge ones.
When we were first talking with...
No, that's for sure.
The USDA definition for agricultural is five acres is a farm, five acres.
But since we're not talking about farms now, that acreage thing doesn't matter.
Remember, this was done...
No, I know, I know, I'm just moving forward here.
But the five acres does come into play, though, still, right?
No, because it's not a farming activity.
Okay, so then you could put on an acre plot?
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Okay. Here's, with the, yeah.
I've been involved in this for months and months and months, doing research for the selectmen and stuff. The reason the five acres was put down there, to eliminate people from a one-acre parcel in the event that they could do multiple grows.
That's what I...
To eliminate some, well, I have 1.1 acres at my house, residential agricultural. I don't want to be able to turn that into a pot farm in the middle of a residential area. I don't think that's right. I think it's, the five acres was put in there specifically to review that there'd be plenty of surroundings around for security purposes and lack of disturbance to neighbors.
And isn't that taken care of in the special permit, I guess, I would bet?
Well, but if you have a one acre lot...
One more buffer against, Pat's got something to add, too.
If my next-door neighbor on his one acre wants it to be the one to apply, and he gets it, I don't want him there 10 feet from my boundary line.
No, you're saying one person, but they were saying that's only refers to the retail, not to the cultivation.
No, I'm talking about cultivation.
No, cultivation.
Yeah, we're not given restrictions. That's not what our job is.
Is that right?
Yeah, our job isn't to restrict numbers, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have some clarification.
So Mr. Chairman, in regard to Mr. Kalaszewski's concerns, which are important, that the neighbors are going to be concerned about these industrial facilities so close to them, I think more pertinent than addressing and limiting the size of the parcel itself would be to look at the buffers and the setbacks.
Right.
And to set them at a higher standard, potentially, for a cultivation facility for marijuana than you do in your dimensional tables for just any activity, where you might have a setback, only on a side setback, you might have 10 feet, which would, you could end up then with a 20. You could be on a five-acre parcel and still be 20 feet from your house if you haven't set the buffers. I think the buffers and the setbacks are the real key point that you might want to be addressing and looking to deal with those particularly.
Which might functionally, actually, to the point of it being a larger parcel, we want it to be on, so that functionally, it may end up being something like that, but be more specific to the activity more to our concerns.
Right, that's what really gets, I think, you to controlling and regulating that specific concern, more so than just looking at the overall parcel and not addressing that.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
John, Adam, I keep coming back to this. If it's not farming, what is it? Has the state said it's a commercial venture?
No. The state allows municipalities to qualify however they choose. The term that was used was not farming, it was agriculture, and there was a question about whether, where it is the cultivation of a crop, whether it qualifies as quote-unquote agriculture, which has an important meaning under Massachusetts general laws, of course, subjecting it to the protections of Chapter 48, Section 3, making it essentially zoning exempt if it's on a certain size parcel, et cetera. And so that question existed at first when the legislation was adopted, and subsequently there was a clarification that, no, indeed, it's not, and there was an amendment that specifically said, no, it's not agriculture, therefore, it doesn't qualify for all those various exemptions, and it can be regulated through the zoning process the same that, same way that any other use could be.
So it's not agriculture. What is it? I keep coming back to this, and I guess it makes me think more by being on this board, is if the town creates an area and allows this to happen, and I'm not going to pick a spot, but all of a sudden, they're growing, they're growing marijuana and harvesting. The neighbor comes along and says, I want to manufacture septic tanks there. Well, you can't do that. That's not allowed in this area. It's like, well, it's a, it's a commercial business, no different than growing marijuana is. It's not agriculture, but yet we're allowing a commercial venture in an agricultural area. So now are you discriminating against this other person because they want to have something different? I don't know.
Well, I can, I can give you the practical answer, and then I can give you the legal answer to that problem.
Okay.
So practically, I understand the conundrum here. It, you know, looks like a duck, quacks like a duck, it's a duck. You see this commercial operation, this marijuana cultivation facility, and well, why can't I have another commercial operation in the same district? We get these questions often with solar facilities. You've got a solar facility on a property, the property next door says, well, I want to, I want to manufacture widgets. Why can't I manufacture widgets? I've got a solar farm next to me. They're, they're producing electricity. That's a commercial industrial venture. Why can't I do it? Well, the answer is legally, solar energy systems are exempt under Chapter 48, Section 3. You can't outright prohibit them, and so even though they look like a duck and quack like a duck, it's not really a duck under state law. Well, the same thing with marijuana establishments. These marijuana establishments are now protected by virtue of the legislature, the people having spoken, and then subsequently, the legislature having spoken and amended the legislation, saying that these sorts of facilities have to be allowed.
Okay.
So you couldn't, you couldn't manufacture septic systems next door if that's not allowed use in the district, because septic systems don't have special legislation that say they're legitimate anywhere.
Got you. Thank you.
So I would, because we also break our zoning bylaws into four different areas, residential, community facilities, commercial, industrial. So I would put this under commercial, I guess, and under commercial, we do have a couple special permitted activities in residential agricultural areas already. Landscaping business, for example.
Shouldn't we create another separate area, not commercial? Because if we're, put it into commercial heading, now we're admitting it's commercial, and that would only strengthen the septic guy's argument. So shouldn't we create, I mean, it wouldn't be that big of a deal if we created a separate area for it, I don't know.
Need category, like...
Different category, yeah.
Sure.
Pat, your, our zoning bylaws, for medical marijuana, we did a separate district, but um...
Yeah, that was an overlay district.
Should we try to fit this under commercial, industrial, or someplace, or create a whole other...
I think the communities that are distinguishing between the types of establishments, as Adam has described, are putting the various types of establishments in the appropriate category. So retail establishments under business...
We're talking about cultivation and processing.
Manufacturing under, yeah. So, so I think, even though it is for purposes of 48, Section 3, not considered exempt as an agricultural, a lot of towns still considered as an agricultural activity and might list it in that section of their bylaw. In the end, I don't think it's really going to matter. You might decide you prefer to have it in the commercial section and it could equally apply to those establishments.
Well, right now, we don't, we don't have a title called agriculture. It's called commercial.
Nice.
We have agriculture under community facilities, extensive uses in commercial...
Yeah, it's in that first community facilities section.
Extensive uses in community facilities.
It's a drafting question.
It's a bit of form over substance, but I understand, I understand the issue. I will say that Attorney Evans, before I stepped in here today, handed me a document to consider, and what he's done is he's essentially taken the Montague form, and if the board saw fit to adopt it, has crafted a version of it for Deerfield, and so he's done exactly what you suggested, which is he's broken out extensive uses in community facilities. He's got two entries, greenhouse for marijuana cultivation and outdoor marijuana cultivation. Then when he gets to the retail sales, he's put that under Section C, commercial. He's got retail sales, storefront, delivery, social consumption, and then testing. And then under industrial, he has things like indoor marijuana cultivation, project, product manufacturer, transport, research. Those are industrial uses. So he's separated them out in that fashion, which is in keeping with the Montague model because that's how they've done it.
Yeah.
But it's really, it's really your choice.
Here's a copy of the Montague one, if anybody wants to see it. All right.
I still sent us a copy.
So do you have enough direction, you think, at this point?
Uh, I...
On the cultivation and processing?
I do, yes, on that topic, yes.
So now, comment?
Just a question, how, how do we legislate, or how, what's the term that we use for the cultivation of tobacco, which then is said for processing? I mean, it's, it's a plant, but it's grown for commerce, for business. It's, you know, it's not sold around to your neighbors.
So what, someone mentioned here, Section 48, three, agricultural use exempted. So we, in Deerfield, agricultural use is by right in all our zones. And what was, and that's probably why they're saying this is not agriculture, so it's not just by right. But that's just to let you know that right now, agriculture is governed by right throughout any place, industrial parks, every place.
So you can grow tobacco in it?
Agricultural use, I, you know...
I just wondered whether there, it has different...
Yeah, we're, we're not talking about tobacco, so we didn't study up on that one tonight, but I...
Cucumbers.
Because I thought they're kind of along the same lines, and maybe that was...
No, no, different. All right, so how about, so now we got the other two classifications, it's product manufacturing and then retail sales. Does anybody want to take up either of these types? I think, I think we should, because, again, we're trying to back up because we need to vote on this at a town meeting. I don't have the calendar there.
End of April.
And then we have to have a public hearing prior to that, and we need to have at least two weeks' notice prior to a public hearing.
John, you said that we have to do it at a town meeting. I think South Hadley is actually going to make a ballot vote of what they do.
Yeah, they're doing the referendum, and they're doing a ballot initiative.
So I'd almost think we'd follow suit with that. I think more people partake in it, if it's a ballot vote than town meeting vote.
And who's putting that forward? Is it the planning board, or is that the select board?
Planning board. I believe it was the planning board in South Hadley.
Too important to be voted on by a show of hands and having one person decide if that's, you know, how many hands were on.
I didn't understand.
It's too important of an issue to be decided on a show of hands.
At a town meeting.
At a town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, that can be swayed, push it back. There's so much gray in that kind of selection process.
Right, so, but the question is, Max, how does that, how do we proceed to that? Is that our, our initiative? Do we take that? Do we make that step?
I think the, I think it was South Hadley, the planning board.
Michael Fisher told us about it when he was here last time.
There was an article in the paper, I should have maybe cut it out.
Okay, so this is our second meeting on this, and the public comment seems overwhelming that cultivation and processing in residential agriculture, I'm not seeing the issue here. So are you talking cultivation and processing, or are you talking about manufacturing, or are you talking about retail? Because I think a lot of what we're talking about is retail, and we're kind of...
No, the, it's...
That's what I'm hearing.
The whole ball of wax.
It's the whole ball of wax, but I believe it's just about growing facilities.
Well, unfortunately, it's all...
South Hadley?
It's all melted together. Everything's melted together. I asked Adam, you can't segregate the grow from the manufacturing, from the, zoning-wise, you can, but you can't say, we'll allow grow, but we won't allow...
It is...
Yeah, it's definitely...
Yeah, but in the state's eyes, it's not. It's either...
Help us out, Adam.
Do you understand what I'm saying, Adam?
I'm not sure that I do. In terms of a prohibition, so I, I think there's some confusion as to the basis for a referendum vote. And I was just asking, you know, what the, what South Hadley's doing, because I'm not familiar with the process that's underway there. It sounds like they're maybe pursuing multiple avenues, as had been suggested before as an alternative. So to the extent they're going to a referendum vote, I imagine the sole purpose of the referendum is the question of whether or not the use should be prohibited, because that can only be accomplished via a referendum in a community that voted yes on question four. These other sorts of questions, the adoption of a zoning bylaw, that's by town meeting by statute. Referendum vote doesn't, doesn't substitute for a town meeting. You can always go to a referendum vote for a non-binding sense of the, of the, the public sentiment, but it's only a town meeting that can take action to actually adopt the bylaw. So if we're going the route of a bylaw, something like the Montague model tailored to Deerfield's wants and needs, you would need to go to town meeting, you need to follow the usual zoning adoption processes, public hearing before the planning board, recommendation to town meeting, et cetera, that you would for any other zoning bylaw. If you wanted to pair that with a question of a prohibition, then you could certainly put a, a separate article on the warrant for prohibition, which would need to go hand in hand with a referendum vote. There are some challenges, and they're probably a bit too extensive to get into tonight on the floor of our, of our meeting, but there are some challenges going the route of multiple alternatives. I understand it's like three candidates on the ballot, and you choose the one you like the best, but, you know, for example, I'll give you one, this concept of a moratorium. Let's put a moratorium on, that'll be the first one. If it passes, we don't need to get to two and three. Two and three would be an outright prohibition or a zoning bylaw. The moratorium passes. Well, now you try to justify the moratorium on the basis that your planning effort wasn't complete, and it was complete enough for you to put two different articles on the, on the warrant, showing that you had studied the issue and were prepared to adopt zoning. So there are some challenges, and that's not the only challenge. There are some challenges that exist with this, you know, you have your choice, à la carte approach to, to addressing recreational marijuana. But it can be done. I think that's probably what, what's being done in, in Hadley.
They're giving them different options.
And can you do a bylaw for cultivation and then a moratorium on sales? Because you want more time to consider that? Because we don't, we haven't started our public hearings and discussions about that, so we don't have anything prepared for that.
So I hesitate to say, no, you can't, because I think the same sort of analysis would be applied, whether there's a planning effort underway. I don't know of any town that has done that as of yet. Towns have either, they've, they've approached it on a, on a, you know, full-scale wholesale basis. They've looked at everything from start to finish, neither zoned for it or sought a moratorium.
So I guess what I'm hearing in Deerfield, I think we're a particular maybe town, because we have a very great history of farming here, and I think that's where this has been at for the past 15 months or whatever, is that we were hoping that our professional agricultural people could, this could be available to them and not have to wait too long. And so I think that's, that's kind of why I was wanting to separate this, is try to get, it doesn't seem like there's been any, you know, someone voices some potential detrimental aspects to it, but I haven't been convinced that there's that many. So why couldn't we do one and then hold off on the others, I guess, if that's what the town wants?
And again, I'm not, I'm not going to tell you you can't, and you're the policymakers, not me. What I, what I will say is that I'm not sure that the Commonwealth, that the state would see you as being, you know, quite as unique as you describe, only because many municipalities are saying, sure, we welcome the cultivators, because the, what they perceive, what the public perceives as the ancillary impact from these sorts of facilities are impacts associated with the true dispensaries, the retail shops. And that was the case back with medical as well. They didn't want the dispensaries with the line out the door, but they didn't care if there's some nondescript building on the corner of town that nobody knows what's going on inside that happens to be cultivating marijuana that you can't see, you can't smell. That's not a problem. So we've had many communities that will welcome with open arms the growers, but they don't want anything to do with the retail sales, so.
And the product manager, uh, product manufacturing, that's a whole nother.
That's a whole nother.
And we haven't even met those people. We don't even, you know, we don't know what that looks like. That's, that's an interesting, to me, that's part of the mystery of this, that.
But just to clarify, the product manufacturer, they wouldn't sell it. It still has to go to the sales.
Totally agreed, I get that.
Product manufacturing's in a building and probably a nondescript building somewhere.
I agree, I agree. I'm just saying, this is a, and that's a new, that's Conagra, but totally different.
But with naturally grown.
Yeah, 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 no, I, well, same.
Yes, Pam.
So I, as has been mentioned, there are public hearings coming up in the next couple of weeks with questions for the Cannabis Control Commission. And one of the questions that we have, and I'd be interested in Adam's take on this, is that it says that the, the ballot referendum is required for the prohibit, prohibition of the operation of one or more types of marijuana establishments. So one of our questions to the Cannabis Commission is if you were to allow some, but not all, of the now long list of marijuana establishments, would you still have to go through the ballot election process?
In, in our opinion, and I just might go to your question, Mr. Ronas, which was, you know, is it, does the state see it as all or nothing?
Right, that's, I guess that's how to rephrase it. I mean, to opt out is to opt out all or nothing. And if the answer to yes is, if it's yes.
And, and most communities have taken that approach, it's been all or nothing. I don't, I don't see any prohibition in the statute that would prevent you from piecemeal opting out, but you would require that referendum vote for any aspect for which you, you wish to opt out. So you couldn't say, we're going to allow these cultivation and processing facilities, but since we're allowing those, we're not going to allow the retail sales, and we can get away with that without going to the, to the ballot. You got to go to the ballot because you're restricting the retail facilities altogether. So that's consistent with the interpretation you've heard.
Adam, I have a question. So if our intention is to do the twen-, you know, you can limit it to twenty percent of your liquor licenses, so if we had one retail outlet, we can not license the social consumption establishment, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes, once you meet that, once you meet the minimum.
Okay.
Right.
I just want to make sure that that was absolutely true, that was our intention. We don't let any social consumption.
Right.
On premises use and then walk out the door and get divorced.
And that, that's been, that's been a question, because it was unclear in the statute. I think the regulations, and I'll reread them again, but I'm fairly certain that they clarified.
When we were, when we were in Boston, that was, it was clear that if you did the twenty percent and you allowed the one retail, you, you, they said you could get away with the social consumption, but I just wanted to verify.
Because that was the clarification, I believe, that was offered, and again, I'll reread them in the regulations, and you were in Boston just two weeks ago, which was after the regulations were released, and so you were getting the most updated information.
That was, that was what we, the workshop was.
At the MMA conference, right.
It was packed, I mean, because everyone had the same questions.
So that would inoculate us against the, any kind of other intrusion of another.
That was why we were, we were going to use our current overlay district and allow the retail in the, one retail license in.
The current overlay.
The current overlay. And therefore, you know, it's away from schools and, you know, general walking and sociability of our.
So that would be P and I, P and, P and I?
A what?
That would be in.
Industrial and planned industrial, yeah.
Yeah, planned industrial and land.
It's, it's the over, marijuana, we have already have a marijuana.
Right.
He's clarifying what it is, it's an industrial.
But that's in the P and the V I, uh, zoning districts.
Yeah. And as, as our DEDIC friend mentioned earlier, that maybe the land industrial, once they get into it, they can't actually do it there.
Well, it, right now, they're prohibited in that area anyway because of the five hundred foot buffer, which we would not change, um, from the nursery school there is within five hundred feet of the industrial park. So the, the industrial park.
Okay, but we can't say it's, that we're saying you can do it there and then we're saying you can't do it there at the same time? That's not very fair.
At the moment, there's a nursery school there, so.
If they move, then they could do it there.
That'd seem to be an issue.
Yeah, but there's parts of there that are more than five hundred feet away now, Carolyn, so.
We were looking at the distant building and.
All right, so, um, we need to make, um, make some progress here. And, Julie?
I have a question on the manufacturing and the, the second step.
Product manufacturing.
Product manufacturing.
Where is that zoned in other towns?
Do you know, Adam?
Well, I think it's just, it's just started, you know, I mean.
Right.
So, do we have any example? I guess the question is, are there any examples of that?
That's what I don't get.
So I can't give you examples of communities that have already zoned for it, because I don't know of any communities that have already zoned for it. Every community is in the same position, the regulations are just a few weeks old, so every community is in a hurry to try to get this done at their annual town meeting in 2018. I can tell you that in the few discussions that I've had with other municipalities about the types of uses, they've talked about allowing the manufacturing in those locations that manufacturing facilities are typically permitted in. So more industrial, commercial or industrial districts as opposed to residential districts. But, again, it's, it's a, it's a judgment call.
And again, it's in the regulations, proposed regulations, there's all the security and all the rest of it, and it's not sold out of there, and it's got a lot of security, and I just want to highlight the fact that it's, I haven't heard anybody say it's a danger to any person or town, so I'm really confused about the detrimental effects of cultivation and product development, product manufacturing. I'm just really having a hard time, and no one's been able to tell me. I keep asking you, I haven't.
Addiction, addicts.
But it's at sale, that's when you buy it, and then you use it.
But it doesn't matter, I mean.
The last thing our society needs is another mind-altering substance.
Right.
That's, yeah. We can't handle alcohol.
No.
We, we have an opioid epidemic, now we're going to throw this on the pile.
Well, no, let's take care of our opioid epidemic, let's put some resources into that.
No, no, I'm just saying, this, at this juncture, this, the last thing that our society needs is another distraction or.
Well, some, some of us might argue that this would be a very good thing for society.
If it was medical.
Yes.
I, I think it would help if, when this comes up, if it's, if it's made clear that the facility that we're talking about is to grow it, and then it is being sent for, to be made into.
Product.
The medicine that goes to spend. It's for medicinal purposes. And so I think people understanding that are going to, once they can lock their mind of, of, they, they won't be so frightened and scared. And if they've seen, uh, we have a dispensary in North Hampton, if they've seen or, or worked with people who have MDS or have lupus, you know, had a, a line that is, you know. Yeah, no.
But this isn't, but this is.
This isn't medical, medical was so yesterday.
But it's still being, being.
A lot of people still buy a new thing for that.
Yeah, but that, once this goes through, medical's done, that's.
It's being grown to be shipped away from manufacturing.
To give it to somebody else.
And I think that, you know, now, yes, when you're talking about bait shops and all that kind of stuff, that's, that's a different, different thing, and that's why we're talking about, you know, possibly tailing her or getting more information with that throwing, but when it's, um, I don't know, like, I guess that, we, we, we grow so many things that, that have, that have other uses that they, they are, are changed into and, and,
Right, just for a little bit of history, how this worked. They temper them with the medical, get everybody used to it, and then come in with the recreational. So the business plan is working perfectly for the marijuana industry.
So now we're off topic, so.
Can I say a topic?
Thank you, Julie.
Is, um, a grower, a cultivator required to sell it, to be manufactured in the town limits of Deerfield?
No.
No.
Did the cultivator sell to the ma-, to the manufacturer?
Yeah, they could sell it wherever they.
I mean, a town doesn't, isn't required to have cultivation, manufacturing and retail in the same town, like, it's not a closed system, it's not.
No.
We have to have that available.
For the same, you don't need to manufacture a product from grow to, to on the shelf in the same community, that's correct. But you need to zone for all, all types of uses. Or prohibit them, but prohibition requires the, the referendum.
But because even if we zone for manufacturing, it isn't necessarily going to happen here. We don't necessarily have the, the location, we don't necessarily have the, all that in place, that's, that's what we're talking about.
So I'm hearing, there's some discussion about this opt-out thing. Would anybody like to?
Talk more about how that would happen.
Talk about what needs to be done for that?
I think Adam sort of described it to a certain degree, it's going to be a process that eventually go to town meeting vote to.
No, I think it's not valid.
And that would be, when's the close, the next time to do that would be November? Does it have to be a?
Not town meeting, I meant like a ballot vote, I'm sorry.
Can it be a special election?
It can.
It can be a special election. So it could go on our May, on our town election?
Whatever your old town election is.
Town elections.
When we book, when we book for.
Planning board members.
Yes.
By the way, I think two of us are probably up this time, if anybody would like to get on the planning board.
Are you up this time?
I forget, I don't know, actually.
And Rachel, are you up? Yes, we're three of us.
So do we want to move a?
Just for the record, South Hadley voted, select board put on a warrant article, uh, at a town meeting, they voted to put a ban on the election, which will happen in April. They also passed bylaws, the planning board moved some bylaws forward, so they have a backup plan.
That's what I, so they're not left high and dry.
Right, so there's your options, Roger, just, just like that.
So in other words, they may be, maybe they don't want manufacturing, and they don't want the retail, but they want the cultivating, so.
No.
No, they voted to put the question as to whether the town wishes to ban it on election ballot, which is what you'd have to do if you approved it, which this town did and many did. And they also, that came from the select board to the, they have a representative town meeting that voted to put it on the ballot. So that was on the ballot, but also at town meeting, the plant, through the planning boards submitting zoning articles, they did do zoning. Which would fall into place if the ban fails.
Did they have that meeting already, Wendy?
They didn't have the election vote, but that's what happened at a special town meeting, I think.
That's the one that happened, that we were, and so that means that they have two, two candidates on their ballot. They, they took the moratorium off the ballot, so, and that, that's the kind of planning, I think, that we're talking about, and Adam is pointing us toward.
But it's up to the select board here whether to put it on a ballot.
Okay, so that, because it takes two things. So the first thing would be the legislative body, in this case, is select board?
Right, so, so the, the opt-out requires the select board to take that action, that's correct, and then the voters. They have to place it on the ballot.
So is the planning board want to, like, make a recommendation or something? That's, I, I did think it wasn't just us that could put it on the ballot, so we can't, we need to ask the.
So you, so if you got, was it forty registered voters or whatever it is to put an article on, uh, I'm going to say town meeting, but on a ballot question? They could petition a selectman, that could happen, right?
Well, the selectman could do it without that.
Right, right, I'm just saying, that's not the only option.
So is that where we want to go? We want to see if the select board wants to put it on the ballot for opt-out, and then we have, if that doesn't pass, then we have a zoning bylaw that could be voted on.
That's my choice.
We craft something, I agree with John, I think we still need to craft something.
Right.
And I agree with you, because.
Speaking just for myself, as a selectman, I'm not interested in opting out. So let's, um, I'll lay that out right now. I would love for the planning board to do your work, to get your zoning bylaws orchestrated so we can be proactive and have all of our ducks in a row, so nobody comes into this community and sets up shop without having any rules in place. We're able to collect tax if it does pass. I mean, we'd have a company come in and set up shop with us doing nothing, and we couldn't even collect the tax on it, yet we'd still have to have our police enforcing it. So just speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for any other selectmen, I'm not in favor of opting out, so I'd love, I'd love for you to.
I'm a little confused on this. So you're saying taxed, and it, you mean, what is the tax on the cultivation? I didn't even catch that.
No, I'm talking retail. So retail's still trucking along, along with your cultivation discussion, retail's still coming, and that's really what the people want to do. I mean, obviously, our farmers want to do this, and I support them wholeheartedly. They need a crop they can sell. So I'd love them to get, I'd love them to sell, I mean, grow and produce and sell on to a manufacturer, medical and retail marijuana. And I'd also love to have our town have the bylaws in place in case a retail comes in, and if we've done nothing, town meeting is showing up pretty quick. If we've done nothing in that timeframe, and as of June or so, or April, May, they can start issuing license to CCC, we're out of luck for at least a year, unless we have another special town meeting, but we have a meeting coming up.
Can we talk about opting out and having a zoning at the same time?
Right, so, let's, so I think we're all in agreement on that one, so let's, well, we'll recommend to this.
Thank you, thank you.
So the planning board can recommend to the select board that they put the opt-out on the ballot. And if that doesn't pass, then we have the bylaw prepared.
I, I think that's sound, that's good reasoning.
Right. So let's get to the bylaws then, is that what you're going to get to?
I was going to ask a couple of questions, and maybe it wasn't to the bylaws.
Well, we're the planning board who wants to take charge of the bylaws here.
Everybody's in favor of supporting the farmers, I am too. There's some local farmers here, if they came next to my house and started growing the crops they grow, I would not have an issue with it, one, at one, at all. But if someone of them came up and wanted to rent some land or do it next to me, I think anybody in this room would have an issue with it. And Max brought up the concerns, and you say there's no concerns, John. I can't see how you say that.
No, no, it's not that there's no concerns, the, the issue is.
Just the more activity and all that kind of stuff going on. But if they were going to raise onions or potatoes or flowers next door to anybody probably in the community, there would be no issues. I think most people will have an issue with it if it pops up. And now, it's not even five acres, it's an acre parcel.
Well, we're talking about the, the setbacks, that was.
Right, well, that could limit some of it, yes.
So we need to get, start.
Yeah, but that's not going to limit all of them, unless you make them like a mile wide or long or whatever the setbacks, and you're not going to do that, that'd be unrealistic. So, and then, everybody's talking about helping the farmers out to sell it. I think Max acts, some of the guys, farmers, where they're going to sell it, and they couldn't come up with a place that they're going to sell their product. And most people that produce or manufacture a product, they sort of want to know where it's going to go, and Adam said there's nobody, nowhere in the Commonwealth that's even processing it right now. So would I grow a product, or would you grow a product and not have a place to go with it? I don't think many people do that.
All right, thank you, so, but worried about the bylaws and the zoning, okay. We're not trying to help them with their market and stuff like that, that's their business, so, yeah. All right. So, oh boy.
I have one question to ask Adam. Our present bylaw in our industrial zone for medical marijuana, I want to make sure that if someone opened a medical marijuana store there, can they go back to the zoning board at a later date and add retail sales because they're already selling the marijuana product? Is that possible for somebody to get a zoning board variance at that point? The way our bylaws are written, I think they're a little, not quite definitive.
Why, why do you say they're not definitive?
Well, let's go into, it says medical marijuana sales. Marijuana is the product, the sale is medical, somebody wants to add retail, um, what, what would be wrong with that?
Well, if there, one is nonprofit and the other's for profit, right?
No, no, they're all for profit.
It's all for profit.
So, so there are, there are different licensing schemes. So when the, when the medical marijuana legislation was passed a few years ago under the oversight of the Department of Public Health, there's an entire scheme that's presently in place with respect to those facilities, a licensing process. That process is going to be subsumed within the Cannabis Control Commission process effective December thirty-first, 2018, the end of this calendar year. So essentially, the CCC will have full control over whatever the DPH currently has control of. I think that the long-term goal here is obviously to unite this concept of medical and recreational such that it's under a single, single oversight. Facilities that are currently licensed and in operation as RMDs, registered marijuana dispensaries, can convert to recreational facilities. So the answer to your question is yes, that can occur if they're currently licensed.
Okay, but the, Mr.?
Yes. Could that potentially make it two sites then, at that point? Let's say that, say that somebody comes in and does, and gets that one license to be a recreational one, and then you have, you have a, you know, a drug, you know, a medical marijuana, then they can automatically apply and get the license for the other, then that would create two, wouldn't it? Or is that?
Single, single facility. Single facility.
They have to track things separately, but they are allowed under the regulations to do them in a single facility.
I don't believe that's what Paul says. What Paul says is that our current bylaws allow medical marijuana in this parcel. Okay, so can their medical marijuana, then somebody comes along and they want to sell recreation here. So they're the one recreation. Can this medical now convert to medical and recreation? So now you have two recreations side by side.
No, the idea is if you've got if you've got a facility that is in existence, operational with a license. That facility can convert from a registered marijuana dispensary, RMD licensed under the current scheme. That facility can convert to a recreational facility.
So they have the first option.
But we don't have any. Not in operation.
Never mind.
But but the fact that properties are zoned for medical marijuana use, that has no effect on the on the new rezoning that's being proposed?
I want to point out in my research with other and there's people here that have done the same research. The medical marijuana is in a decline when the recreational goes into effect in other states. So basically, most of the medical marijuana will disappear and be overtaken by recreational for several reasons. So this is what I'm concerned about.
So many towns are actually getting rid of the medical marijuana overlay districts, right? Is there any reason not to do that?
There are communities that are placing everything under a single umbrella.
Right, right.
Whether you choose to do it in the form of an overlay, you choose to eliminate the overlay altogether. And allow it in certain existing zoning districts, that's a discretionary question for all of you, but it can that can be done.
So I'm suggesting, because we spent a year on this two years ago, is that we make this. So for cultivation and processing, we do the residential agriculture. And then for the product manufacturing and for the sales, we leave the district that we already created in.
Is there any reason why we couldn't put the cultivation and processing and include that in the industrial areas as well? I mean, why only the residential agriculture?
Also, yeah, sorry, that's what we discussed last time, RAI and PI.
Right, and then for the manufacturer-
Just N I and P I.
Right, and this is all to hedge our bets in case opt-out.
Right.
Well, that's a good question because obviously I heard well, we were supposed to speak on this a long time ago. That there was a proposal that was gonna be allowed miracle marijuana was gonna be allowed to be grown in residential agricultural areas. And we never as a planning board had a discussion on it.
Cause it came came to us within the month before, that was last year. Yes, it came to us with two proposals. There was one about height distance and there was another about they came right under the line. We'd had no, we couldn't open it to a public meeting or anything.
I remember at one point in time, we had a meeting and Dick was supposed to come and make a presentation about this. And I guess I I'm thankful for our selectmen to think ahead about making these regulations. So somebody couldn't just come in and just set up shop. But I think they should have talked with us about what zone it should been in. Because personally, I don't think it should be in agricultural residential in area. I just don't feel it fits there. So but we're faced with that and that's my idea. I don't think it belongs in that zone, plain and simple. But we never had really had any discussion on it. It's just a proposal the selectmen came to us with it.
For cultivation or are you talking about something else?
Cultivation.
Okay, so last month we spent an hour and a half on it, tonight we'll spend two and a half.
Right, I know, but prior to that, we never had a discussion on it, John.
That's fine.
Well, that if you feel it's fine, good.
Well, no, it's a pass, Roger.
And we're gonna have another public hearing on it in a couple of weeks, so this I think we're given a lot of ample opportunity.
And it doesn't mean that we can't look at it doing-
No, no, I know that, Rachel, but that's what I'm saying. I think we should look at another zone. I don't think it should be agricultural residential. I'm just speaking my it's my opinion.
You started by saying you supported farmers cultivating it and now you're saying we don't want any residential.
No, I never did, John.
About two minutes ago.
No, I said he's supporting farmers.
Supporting farmers. Sorry, sorry, I thought you said you supported farmers doing this, okay.
And manufacturer, PPD.
Industrial and planned industrial, not EPD.
Yeah, EPD for manufacturer.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, that's the old Oxford site.
Yep.
Mr. DeGroot, you mean?
So- Is the EPD within the existing medical marijuana overlay?
No.
That would be for manufacturer.
Okay, so but I thought I heard the chairman say a moment ago that the manufacturing and the retail would be allowed in the existing overlay.
Right, which is which is industrial and planned industrial, which is industrial south.
Right.
Southern portion of the industrial district located south of Elm Street and bordering the railroad to the east, Route five to the west.
So so what you're proposing is that the manufactured retail facilities would be located in either the existing medical marijuana overlay or the EPD?
Right.
Retail and manufacturer, aren't those segregated as well?
Yes.
Retail, manufacturer, so I would say manufacturer, EPD.
But not retail.
Not retail.
Retail is just the overlay.
Yes.
Yes, correct.
Did the select board have any discussion on this?
We just wanted to limit to an area that would not negatively impact the town. So we put a lot of effort into the overlay district initially. And so that was where we decided that, I mean, we didn't vote, but there was consensus that the retail outlet. Our twenty percent limit was one and our one would be limited to the current overlay district.
Alright.
That was already supported by the town. And whether we had a medical that wanted to convert to retail. And it is clear, as Adam had said, that the Cannabis Commission is absorbing DPH's medical. And that seems very trending that in fact it all merges and the medical actually goes away. So whatever, we're just we just want to protect the town and it seemed like the most reasonable way to do it.
The thing that I haven't really heard clearly is the size of a grow facility. Not maybe what's proposed in Deerfield, but statewide or even countrywide. Does anyone have an idea of what's an average square footage of a grow facility?
There's four tiers, the you know, up to a thousand, thousand to five thousand. In the tier four, the biggest is over ten thousand.
When you say a thousand, thousand-
Canopy.
Yeah, they defined it as square feet of canopy. I'm not trying to be a expert of what canopy is.
Square, square, square feet of grow under canopy.
So if one should think about the largest area being ten thousand square foot building. It's not really that large. I mean, our bylaws allow in the most business districts up to ten thousand square feet anyways. So I wonder why is this limited to an agricultural area if it's not really that big?
Well, that's why I we're adding the other zones.
Mr. Chairman.
Ten thousand square feet to quarter an acre, I mean just a-
Yeah.
We have some-
We've been doing some research on the nature of these cultivation and processing facilities to begin to get a handle on this question. And we've been downloading images and so forth. And I think ten thousand square feet would be considered small. This is ten thousand and up. We typically see structures, facilities that are twenty thousand, fifty thousand square feet. There's a there's a huge million square foot mega thing that's planned in eastern Massachusetts. So these are large industrial scale facilities. I think we have to keep that in our mind. Even even the greenhouses, when you see the pictures of what people are building as new greenhouses. It's not what you think of, you know, just a greenhouse growing flowers, honestly. It's done on a larger scale. It's part of the economies of scale, I think, of the industry itself.
And even even the medical marijuana treatment centers were of a similar scale. We had a few proposals in a couple of communities. Often they they start small. They've got to build these facilities, the indoor facilities to be in keeping with the regulations. So they have this modern technology that prevents, you know, air from outdoors entering the facility and provides for that sterile environment. And so when they invest that sort of cost, often they're not gonna utilize the full building at the start. So we have facilities that came in, we signed host community agreements for, you know, sixty, seventy-five thousand square foot facilities. That we're starting out at only thirty thousand square foot under canopy, so to speak, for purposes of the actual cultivation. With an understanding that over a course of a five to ten year period or less, if business was good. They'd expand into the full the full area that they were had built up.
Okay, so if this is not agriculture and we have square foot requirements in town and commercial area. How does this all blend together? The, you know, the size requirements versus being non-agricultural, but being done in agricultural area. Well, how do you how do you limit the size? Now you're talking fifty, seventy thousand, hundred thousand foot, square foot buildings. And even in our regular bylaws, John, what do we allow like?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand and C two.
So the special permit again, fifty-three, twenty-four, neighborhood character and social structures, adequacy of utilities, traffic flow. I mean, these all come up on the special permit. So by putting some setbacks and things like that and then looking at our, you know, what we have in the special permit. You certainly can start to, you know, where they're permissible. That's how you that's how you take care of that.
Now, if somebody utilizes current agricultural buildings to do such a thing, do they have to come back to go through site plan review? Or do they just opt, you know, automatically?
That's a good question. I mean, there are individuals that have greenhouses now. And if our setback is, say, three hundred feet, do they have to move their greenhouse?
Right, there's a lot of components to this.
Yeah, it just keeps getting deeper and deeper.
Yeah, there's a lot of empty dairy farms.
Do you want to come up to Mike's discussion?
The answer to John's question is, yes, I can't remember what the question was now. I have a suggestion though, and that is that you entertain the chair entertain a motion. To request counsel to draft a warrant article that does the following. That repeals the medical marijuana provisions in the existing bylaw. That authorizes cultivation marijuana cultivation operations in those three districts you described. That limits retail operations to one in the existing overlay district. That would be the essence of the motion. I think that summarizes it.
I kinda liked it, except if you've just repealed the medical, then it doesn't exist anymore, so you can't-
Well, you have to reestablish that area, yes.
So it's either convert convert this into the all marijuana or somehow. And is it is it I'm still not sure, is it a use in the table or should it be its own section? If you're gonna have your own setbacks and things, it seems like it should be its own section.
So we're gonna have to take a closer look at this now that we have a sense as to what the board would like in terms of the division of uses, where those uses will be permitted. As you say, with any zoning change, there, you know, you change one thing and it affects five other things in the bylaw. You have to be mindful of how the dimensional requirements are going to apply to this particular use. As you say, you can't eliminate entirely the overlay district, which you'd be doing if you eliminated the provisions of the bylaw that created the overlay district. If you intend to use it, you also have to be mindful that in your table of use regulations, the overlay district isn't listed as a column because it's an overlay district. So you can't simply go in under manufacturing and say it's gonna be allowed in the EPD in the overlay because there's no column for overlay. So we're gonna have to look at the logistics of, you know, how we fit this into the bylaw. It'll be a little challenging, but we'll make it work.
Excuse me, I remembered your question about converting one to the other. One of the other requirements for getting a license to operate any marijuana establishment under the new law. Is the applicant has got to demonstrate that what he proposes to do is compliant with local zoning. And so it's not real clear how that's gonna be done. But certainly if if you have a bylaw that requires marijuana cultivation to be in this district. Then the applicant is gonna come to you and and seek some, either come to you or to the town or to the selectmen or somewhere. To obtain a confirmation that the proposed operation is conformance with local law, which gives you a lot more say than matter.
Yeah, I get where you but I don't think you really understood what I was getting at. Okay, farmers. They get special privileges as they should. They're exempt from many different things. So say the farmer is going to utilize greenhouses that he put up as agricultural greenhouses. They were exempt from any state and local rules and regulations. Now that it's not going to be a farming facility anymore. Do they need to go back and follow the rules like a regular commercial endeavor?
Yes, marijuana cultivation does not enjoy the agricultural exemption anymore. As a result of the the change that was made to the statute last December.
Which is true. You raise a more complicated question than that, which is what do you do about existing buildings? That were zoning exempt now being repurposed for a non-zoning exempt use? That question hasn't been posed yet. I can tell you that it was there's an interesting case involving the old courthouse in Cambridge.
Change of use, if you will.
Which was which was protected use. It was a federal courthouse, so it was a zoning exempt use. And there's been an effort of late to convert it to a mixed use structure, multi-million dollar mixed use structure. And the question was that it enjoyed the status of a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And the court's determined indeed, to many people's surprise, that it did. Even though it wasn't truly pre-existing non-conforming because it wasn't lawful when constructed in the sense that it didn't mean zoning then, it was just exempt from zoning. Court said it didn't matter. So my sense is that that would be allowed through the process of modifying a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Changing the use within the structure appropriate.
I would almost disagree with you because that's a lot different than an all federal courthouse.
It's a it's a zoning exempt use that's being converted.
So the other question we have is who would be the special permitting authority? And according to our special permitting guidelines, it says unless specifically designated otherwise, the Board of Appeals. That would be the zoning Board of Appeals shall act as the special permit granting authority. So there's a proposal that we would make the Board of the Board of Selectmen the special permitting granting authority or the planning board?
Or a separate board.
Or a separate board, which-
That was one suggestion of Adam's. I don't know if that's a logistically makes a lot of sense.
Anybody have any comments about that?
Well, a new board I wouldn't agree with because that would just be most likely an appointed board, so.
Appointed from different elected boards.
I do not think that the select board should be the special permitting board. I think they have a bias towards this already. It should be the the regular board that does the special permits now, the zoning.
Zoning Board, ZBA.
ZBA.
Last month, there was some talk about the planning board.
Trevor has his, oh, sorry.
Again, I may have a bias to this, but this select board is the executive board of the town and is elected as such. And they were small, had a big decision.
And we are also the Board of Health and we have been in really spent a lot of time on this morning.
It should be-
Okay.
Any other board than the select board?
I think it should be elected elected body.
Well, if it could be elected, yes.
No, no, but I mean, not another board, but I think it should be elected existing board.
Which the select board is.
Yeah, I know they're elected and the planning board is.
ZBA is not.
Nah, and that's at the whim of the selectmen.
It's a point they're appointed by the selectmen.
Right.
Let's use our language appropriately.
But he's saying he's saying the zoning board is not elected, that's what he's saying.
Right, they're appointed by the selectmen.
They're not, but okay, that's irrelevant. It's the fact they're not elected is what he's saying.
Yeah. So what are we recommending to the draft? Now, this can be this is gonna be discussed at the public hearing, but we want to put something forward.
Right.
So what do we want to put forward? Comment?
To me, I tip towards the planning board because there's seven voices versus three. And I think you represent the town in a wider range than perhaps the three select board do.
Thank you for that.
One of the things I like about the select board is is more I think they get more attention. We often don't get many people at our meetings. I'm not sure if the select board does necessarily.
We don't want.
So maybe that's maybe that's an issue we all have to deal with. And then as Carolyn did mention, the Board of Health, not that this is necessarily a health issue, but zoning part of it isn't, I don't think. So and we do have experience with all the special permitting. We do that basically basically special permitting, we look at all the same things you do for a site plan. You know, look at how it impacts the neighborhood and traffic and all those other things. So we have more experience with that. It would give us more work, but maybe I'm up for time to get off here next here.
Well, it'd be a charge, a quick charge, and then it'd be over more or less.
Yeah, it'd be one big site plan review and then that would be done.
So should we recommend that the draft that goes to the public hearing be the say that the planning board is the be proposed as the special permit granting authority?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright.
Planning board.
Yeah, and then if you could, the setbacks, how do we want to do that? You could you maybe just see what's going on with other towns or?
Is that covered in the CCC's regulations?
Maybe something there. Not in a zoning sense. So I I think I think we're gonna have to look closely at what your zoning provides and then compare it to what's permissible in these districts. And that can be challenging with respect to a something other than a traditional residential use in a residential district. So so we'll take a close look, but that that sort of raises another question and I'm mindful of the of the timeline here. But the the concept of sort of starting with a clean site, which is more or less what we're doing here. Because we're scrapping to some degree what was proposed twelve to fifteen months ago. I understand why. We're talking about something far more comprehensive now. But for the first time for you to have your eyes on that being at a public hearing, before there's any further opportunity to review it, at least in the first instance. I would almost suggest that the board schedule another meeting between now and the public hearing. Based upon the schedule that was provided, I think we've got some flexibility to do that. At which time I can come back, hopefully in advance of that meeting, get you at least a draft of what has come of today's meeting. We can further fine tune it so that the doc- a draft of what has come of today's meeting, we can further fine tune it so that the document that we're advertising for the public hearing is at least a bit closer to what you might actually recommend to town meeting. Looking at the dates, town meeting warrant finalized by the selectmen March 30th. Sound right? So we've got, we've got seven weeks. There's certainly enough time for there to be a meeting to review it and to still thereafter conduct a public hearing, even if we needed to put a placeholder on the, on the, the warrant until such time as you had the final language. I think there's enough time to do it. There's not a ton of wiggle room here, but.
It makes sense, though, because at, at some point, we're, we'll start mashing things together at a, at a meeting that's more public, and if we can bring something a little bit more achieved. It's also incumbent upon the town to provide to the public the draft of what is going to be discussed at that public hearing. When you publish the legal notice, so you really need to have looked at it and voted for it to be available to them as well as for your own review.
There, there could obviously be changes at the public hearing, but I have a concern when the, when you're going to, you know, got half the bylaw, the public meeting, the public hearing, as to whether or not what you're then proposing for town meeting is still within the four corners of what you noticed, and too, too many, too many challenges, so.
Adam, can you have, for lack of knowledge, a, a moving setback rule? In other words, if you say a grow facility has to be a minimum of 100 feet from a property line, but in no instance closer than 200 feet to an existing home? Can you do that type? Where it really has two, it could have two different setback rules.
You can measure setbacks from things other than property boundaries, like nearest residences. That's often what's done, for example, in the context of what they call fall zones or clear zones for wind turbines. They often measure them from the nearest habitable structure. There are some challenges that exist there in terms of how that gets structured and whether practically there are opportunities available for the type of development that you're seeking to allow. Requires a more in-depth analysis on a parcel-by-parcel basis of these districts if you're going to impose stringent requirements as setbacks from nearby habitable structures, for example, but it can be done.
Wouldn't that restrict the use of the neighbor's land in that they couldn't put a, a building that would, the, the siding of the grow facility would limit what would put stricter restrictions on a neighbor's use of their own property?
Well, certainly that couldn't be done through zoning, so that's been dealt with two different ways. And again, I'll give you the example of the wind turbine context. One way is that the bylaw could require that the proponent of the facility have some degree of control over the area. That's not unreasonable for something like a wind turbine. You're talking about a multi-million dollar project, although I guess these are too, where the proponent would need to literally almost purchase an easement over a budding property if they couldn't locate the turbine centrally enough on their property to provide for an adequate clear area. The other option is simply to recognize the reality that you're only, you're only zoning from what's in existence at the time of the bylaw. So if it's a 200-foot setback from the nearest habitable structure, and then after you authorize or permit the project, the neighbor elects to place a new structure within that 200 feet but on his or her property, fully compliant with zoning, that's at their own risk. They can't then complain that they can smell the marijuana being cultivated because they're only 100 feet away when they opted to put that structure up after the fact.
But it sounds, it sounds like what I think Kip was saying is it, it is a certain setback, and then just on the case that there's, that there's a property, a, a building closer than, they, they increase the distance. So you have at least that minimum setback, whatever, whatever it is, right?
Yeah, so that can be structured. There need to be objective standards. There are some communities in Massachusetts that provide for standard setbacks and then allow those setbacks to be varied by way of special permit and unique circumstances. But you can certainly provide, you, you can't provide for an arbitrary standard that gives you full discretion to determine setbacks on a case-by-case basis as needed. But you can provide for, you know, either or, depending upon location of structures or improvements on adjacent property. Sure.
All right. So is that, what do, what do people think? Do you think we need another meeting, or do you think we've got enough information that they can write up a good draft bylaw?
So what, what are we proposing?
I don't think that's the question, John.
Well, our first is, we want the op, we want to give the voters the option to opt out, correct?
So, so we're going to, we're going to, I don't know how do we officially do that? We want to request the select board to consider putting an opt-out referendum on the town ballot.
Right.
That's all we can do. We can't force it. We can request them to consider.
Carolyn already said she wasn't going to do that, so.
No, all, all we can do is request that they do.
Right, so what are our other options when they don't put it on the ballot?
Public, so.
No, 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 there's other ways to get it on the ballot.
I think that would be up to negotiation if you want to let the select board be able to.
With 40 votes, it doesn't matter what you want.
So you don't want to give the town the option unless you get it your way.
I will be voting, all right?
All right, all right, all right. Stop, stop, we have some people that want to talk.
So I do have a concern about the opt-out. My question is, what was the percentage of people that voted yes for marijuana and those who said, uh, said no? I mean, was it that close that people are going to change their mind, or?
Does anybody here know?
I think it was like.
60, 55.
It was roughly 55, 45.
Right, 55, 45.
So.
And there's a lot more information. A lot of people didn't realize what they were voting for.
I did.
Or, or, or they.
Okay, all right. The, the question was the percentage.
Well, you were smart.
No, but I just think is it a time of our resource, a waste of our resources and our time and our money to put into a vote if people really tip the scales towards it?
So that now becomes an issue for the select board because they're the ones that decide whether to put it on the ballot or not. All we're doing is asking them to consider it.
Right.
Yep.
And is an opting out then not supporting their local farmers?
No.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. Is it separate? Is the opt-out on everything?
There are lots of ways.
Apparently it'll be on every.
I don't think it's that binary.
It, it doesn't have to be, but that's how most communities have pursued it. It's, it's challenging to.
I mean, if we decided tonight we wanted to, to go with the cultivating, but we weren't sure about the rest of it, I mean, could that be separated? It can't be?
You need to zone for the rest of it.
Still have to zone.
Will it allow us to take?
We got it, we got it, we got it, yep.
There's a one, one amendment I want to make about people that are considering opting out. First, all of this against majority vote. Second, if it's truly because you think it's a, or you consider it an addictive substance, would you rather have seller, delete the, the, the guy that's selling it now, you know, pushing it, become gangs, become criminals, whatever they are, or at least control it? That's what we're doing with liquor stores after the prohibition. So just consider that before you put it on the ballot. That's, that's my only.
Right, the legal is already starting to lace your stuff with PCP.
Exactly, so that's what we're doing right now. Really? It's not proven that. Then comment the fact that it's truly the fact. Come document that that's truly, but okay, you know, this is a common.
So do you have enough for, for the bylaw?
I, I think I do. Let me reiterate what I think I'm doing so that there's no confusion.
That's what I was hoping to do.
So we, what I haven't heard directly, although I'm getting the sense, because we've been making reference to it, is that we're going the route of something that is in a more Montague-like fashion, as opposed to what was before the board 12 or 15 months ago, something that distinguishes between cultivation slash processing and manufacture slash preparation and retail, each of those being individual, each of those being allowed in different locations, cultivation, processing in the RA, the I and the PI by special permit, manufacturing in the overlay in the EPD by special permit, retail in the overlay only by special permit. The planning board is going to be designated as a special permit granting authority. I'm going to take a close look at the interaction between the various sections of the bylaw, how we modify but not entirely eliminate the medical marijuana overlay district since we need to preserve the district itself, but essentially supplant the concept of marijuana, medical marijuana permitting with the concept of marijuana establishment permitting. I'm going to take a closer look at the various setbacks and other dimensional requirements and see how they apply here, particularly to a non-traditional, non-residential use in the RA district, and I'm going to see what I can do to try to make the appropriate modifications. What's likely going to result from all that is some sort of a self-contained section of the bylaw that is going to replace the medical marijuana overlay district while preserving the overlay district itself and providing for all these standards. So it'll, it'll actually look a bit like the version from 12 or 15 months ago, a self-contained section, but it's going to be more expansive than that, and it's going to provide for everything that I just described. That, an okay synopsis? Subject to more discussion and more review.
I think that's why we need another meeting.
I agree.
Because if we don't have another meeting, then.
Well, that, then what you just said is going to be what we're going to see at the public hearing.
No, 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 no.
I believe that we need to.
So you want another meeting? That's what I asked, you want another meeting?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, that if you wait till a public hearing, you're, you've defeated his, his suggestion.
For, for what it's worth, my recommendation is that I think you need another meeting to fine tune this. I defer to you, but I.
I asked, so people are now saying yes.
I recognize it to be.
That's my question.
Yes.
All right, so if you could do that, how long do you think? In two, should be.
Couple of weeks.
In two weeks?
Two weeks.
So we want to plan another meeting in two weeks?
No, is this, is this just a, just a planning board meeting, not an open meeting, right?
Correct, just a planning board meeting.
Anybody can come.
So that we know.
We have a public comment.
Oh, yeah, it could come, but I mean, it's not a, right.
Before we present it to public.
Do you want to wait, do you want to do it on a Monday, or do you want to do it on the week of the 19th through 23rd?
Can't do it on the 19th, it's a holiday.
That week?
Do it the 20th. That's a Tuesday.
20th?
Sure. 20th? Adam, give you enough time if we do it on.
And that's a Tuesday?
Tuesday.
And what time?
Seven.
Seven, 10:00.
Six, seven, six better for you, or?
Either.
2:20, happy birthday to me.
Happy birthday to you.
So 7 o'clock?
Is it your birthday?
No.
Not much.
All day.
We'll bring cake.
February 20th, 7 o'clock, we will, this will be the main agenda item, and if there is an A and R or something, we can put that on the agenda too, but otherwise, this will be the main topic.
Okay. So I will do my best to get something to you somewhat in advance of that meeting. It is a quick term.
And then just looking at the calendar, when, when is it likely the public hearing should be?
Yeah, I'll redo the calendar based on that, so you guys can see how that will play out. As Adam said, we have, we have a little bit of group maneuver in here, but not a lot, so we'll see how that works.
So we're looking at mid-March for a public hearing kind of thing or something?
Well, it would take that long to do your 14-day notices and all the pretty.
That's what I'm saying, right, all right. And in the meantime, I would suggest that if people want to attend a select board meeting.
I would suggest that all of you, if you want to meet, we'll proceed for the campus commission meeting is tomorrow, 10 to 1.
10 to 1.
It's all planned, so, you're absolutely correct. It's 10 to 1.
I believe I gave you the schedule, so if you can't make it tomorrow, there are multiple meetings across the state over the course of the next couple of weeks, so there are multiple.
Got a Hyannis tomorrow, too?
Yeah, you can go to the beach.
Worcester, this one, Worcester on the 7th.
Polar plunge.
And Boston on the 8th.
It's an aggressive schedule.
Any other, anything else before the board tonight? No business, no other items, annual report? Paul, we got to write an annual report?
Yeah, we're going to try.
Any other business not reasonably anticipated? We've already set the meeting for February 20th. Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So he's going to make a draft, something to make, opt out, right?
Yes.